Good morning. Welcome to this April...
Ninth.
Ninth? School board work session. It's the ninth already?
It is.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you for joining us. We have a roundtable immediately following the work session. So, once the work session's over, I'll poll the school board members and see if they want to start the roundtable immediately or take a short break. But we do have a roundtable immediately following the work session. So, at this time, Madam Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This morning, this morning before you, we're going to bring back, at the request of our board members, a budget, ESC budget overview for Dr. Sankey. And I believe you have Mr. Pitts joining you with that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. I do believe you have the PowerPoint in the folder.
Yes.
That I want to move through.
Which is nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the folder is, yes, is the PowerPoint and then a copy of the, a little bit more line item document that was attached to the work session agenda. Hopefully, it's got print big enough that you can see it this time. The one that was on there, sorry about that. So, to get us started, there's been, you know, various questions over the years I've been here and different things about the ESC budget and how we spend our dollars and where they come from and all these different kinds of things. So, really, today is just meant to be a high-level overview of ESC funding. I know there's going to be a lot of detailed questions about things and rather than try and upload a lot of those details up front, I figured we'd just do an overview and then you guys can kind of give direction on what more detail you'd want to see beyond this because it can get very complicated and confusing on how we, one, are allocated funding and then how we use it as well. Just wanted to start off with a reminder, our division, as far as, you know, the departments, we have Student Services, ESC, and Behavior and Mental Health. They have their own funding sources in each one. Some of them do overlap in different areas, but today, we're going to talk about just the ESC portion of the division. So, when we start, the first thing is, we have two sides of the house. We have local funding, of course, from our general revenue and then, and from our FEFP and then we have all our federal funding, which is various pieces. So, on the local fund side of the budget, we spend about $78 million. And what I've done is kind of given you the big, big pocket items and buckets that we spend the funding on, on each of the slides for each of the different amounts. So, when we're talking about personnel in the local budget, we have, that includes all of our classroom teachers, classroom paraprofessionals across the district, LPNs across the district. You're talking nearly 2,000 staff numbers in that amount right there. Then, we also have many of our contracted services for our students with disabilities that we provide out of this funding. These are done out of local funds so that we can turn around and request Medicaid reimbursement for these services. If we paid for these out of federal dollars, we would not be able to do that. So, we've, over the last several years, moved a lot of these contracts into local funding so we could have that opportunity to do that. The tutoring is our LRC contract. And then, each of our funds, we also have operational requirements as far as supplies, equipment, rentals, things like that, regardless for our staff and our, just our general operations like schools have. And then, of course, travel because we have so many itinerant staff out of our whole division that travel all over the district every day. So, our travel funds are pretty extensive as well. Then, we also have our local instructional materials fund. So, the district, as you know, receives instructional materials across the board for all students and a portion of that, $413,000, is line item just for students with disabilities. So, we use that funding to use for our unique learning news-to-you curriculum, which is our access points curriculum for our students on modified standards. That is a district-wide curriculum for those self-contained classrooms or ESC center schools. It is the state-adopted, proposed, recommended curriculum. So, that's what all districts use for that. This year, we are looking at adding some supplemental materials for that in the area of math because we're not feeling well, we want to beef up what we're doing with our math for those students and want to add some curriculum with that. So, we're looking at a new program there. So, that's everything with our local funding. The next item is our federal funding and this is where we start getting into various pockets of sources. First is our SEDNET grant, which is a discretionary grant from the state. All districts receive that and they are regionally based, based on different districts. We share ours with, Polk is the funding flow-through district for the SEDNET money, but it also share, is shared with Highlands County and Hardy County. So, one of our ESC senior managers, Terry Kreis, the, her position and her secretary are mostly funded out of SEDNET, about 85 percent. They're split-funded with our IDA grant, which I'll get to later. And then, everything that we do for the three districts with training, resources, support for some of our most severe emotionally disabled students, any of those things are all come out of the SEDNET grant. And it's kind, it's divided up into special projects, federal and state, because that's how it's allocated from the, from the state. So, it comes in various little buckets. The next federal source comes through the state is our Fidler's Grant, the Florida Diagnostic Learning Resource Center. We've had this for over 20 years, all districts. It's also regionally based. We cover Hardy and Highlands County for this grant as well and serve as the, as the district flow-through. Dr. Coincetta Tillman is the senior manager that guides this grant and does everything. They also send it to us in pockets of federal funding, pre, an allocated portion just for pre-K and then an allocated portion just for general. As far as positions, it has a lot of personnel in it, a lot of the contract, contracted services for the other districts. Because so much of the Fidler's Grant is about professional development for teachers and staff, they do a lot of training, so they have a lot of equipment. They do a lot of online courses, facilitated courses. They bring in speakers a lot from all over the state and the country for different topics. So, there's a lot of technology and software and travel and things like that involved in the Fidler's Grant. This one specifically is actually on the, is going through the process right now for approval at the May, or April 23 board meeting because it is due to the state on May 1st. It was just approved, the draft was just approved by the state two weeks ago. So, our turnaround on that one is really quick and I'll explain a little bit more at the end. The other thing about most of our federal grant money and sources is that we have indirect costs with each of them and that takes a big chunk of, of the grants depending on what they are. And I'll, and we get to, Jason can talk more about indirect costs when we get, he can explain it, but I can't. Let me get to that point. We have a state personnel development grant that we received from Florida Gulf Coast University. We've been doing this for, we're in year six. It is specifically for providing professional development for teachers in schools in the areas of the check and connect mentoring strategies and the strategic instructional model, which is where our content enhancement and learning strategies instruction comes from and training those teachers. It's about $50,000. The schools that participate in that specifically are Tennerock, Lake Gibson High School, Lake Region High School, and Roosevelt. And then, we're actually expanding some exposure to some of our middle schools moving into next year with that and are adding Westwood, Dennison, Stanbach, Bartow Middle, and Lake Gibson Middle. So, we're going to, we're, the idea there is to provide that training for those teachers so they provide strategies for their students with disabilities in their courses. And what we've seen specifically at Tennerock and Lake Gibson High School is, due to their work, that's attributed to their increase in their graduation rates for students with disabilities. So, we're really excited about that grant and use it consistently. It also includes supplies and travel for the people that participate in that and they do a lot of those trainings during the summer. Then, we get to the big one, the big IDA federal grant, which is the main source of our funding beyond local dollars for our students with disabilities. The IDA federal grant this past year was $25 million. That's pretty consistent from year to year. We've not seen a decrease in that over the years because it's based on our population of students with disabilities. Of course, it comes from the federal, from the national government to the state and then the state disperses it to us. As far as our personnel, this is where we fund a lot of our resource personnel for students with disabilities, a lot of our district staff, anything that's not classroom-based as far as, that would earn FTE. So, none of our classroom teachers and none of our classroom-wide paras are funded out of this because they come out of the FEFP funding. But anything beyond like our, our district administrators, our student-specific paraprofessionals, our specialized nurses for our students with disabilities that need medical care, anything like that comes directly out of this. And that's where a lot of that chunk of the personnel, LEA facilitators is another big chunk. Then, we also have a charter school allocation that's required to come out of the IDA federal grant because charter schools have the right to funding as well as private schools. The charter school allocation is based on, we take the full $25 million, we divide that up by the number of students that we had during survey two in the previous year to determine what is basically the base student allocation from that. Then, we take the number of charter school students that were enrolled at that time and multiply it. That full amount is then divided by each charter school. They're required to submit a plan to us on how they plan to spend their money. That comes to Diane Taylor, ESC director. She approves that. And then, when they want to pull those funding, they send us invoices for whatever they did and then we give them the reimbursement. So, we have a good process in place for how we make sure that the charter schools are spending their IDA federal dollars appropriately. The private school allocation is a little bit different because that's dictated to us by the state on how much we have to allocate for our private schools. This year, it was about $829,000. And then, the private schools come together and they, with us, we have a meeting every May and talk about how do they want that, that funding spent. And then, we do that. Typically, it's done with services in the area of speech and language or tutoring for their students. Those are the two main ways that the private schools have decided to spend that money. We have a huge chunk of our IDA federal grant that is spent on contracted services. These are the types of services that, while it would be nice to be able to turn around and reimburse, get Medicaid reimbursement for, it's a little bit harder to be able to pay for all of these things out of local dollars. So, we go ahead and pay for these out of the federal grant because they are so specific to students with disabilities as well. So, all of our ESC nurses that are for students with disabilities come out of it, a lot of our behavior support that we've been increasing over the last several years, vision, sign language interpreters, just for students, not for adults, just for our students. And then, some of our mental health services, if a student has an IEP that has mental health required services on it, we have a contract out of IDA just for that. We have several students who receive private transportation because their needs are so severe, typically behaviorally, that they cannot be managed on any of our buses, even with our attendants and staff. So, we have some vans and some private cars that transport those students. We have a process with transportation where we decide what students that will participate in that and, and different levels of approval for that. And then, of course, we have all the operations, travel, indirect cost, all of that that comes out of IDA as well. The other thing about IDA is we get a separate allocation just for pre-K. So, this is where we spend a lot of our money just for our ESC pre-K units. Not the teachers and the paras, but any support personnel, any of our district staff that has to provide evaluations for students that are going to be possibly identified as students with disabilities. We do have a contract with a behavior support company because we do have some pre-K students that sometimes exhibit extensive behaviors that we need to support there. And then, of course, all the operations and indirect cost as well. That's all of our funding sources. The one other thing that I wanted to make sure to draw your attention to today is the timelines that are required for approval of each of, of a few of these grants. Like I mentioned earlier, the Fidler's Grant is currently in the process of going through approval for the April 23 board meeting because it's due to the DOE no later than May 1st. I can tell you that that grant pretty much over the years has not changed too much. We're not looking at adding any new positions or anything like that, so it'll, it'll pretty much be the same as this past year. We've not yet received any details on our SEDNET grant for next year as far as what the allocation amount will be or how we'll need to break that up. So, as soon as we get it, we will quickly turn it around and hopefully, I'm sure it'll have to be done by June 30th at that board meeting. So, I'm sorry, at the June board meeting in order to get it done by June 30th, but that one's still to be determined. And then, this is the big one that kind of makes me anxious every year because every year, we seem to get it from the DOE later and later, which, based on our board meetings with the, in the district, we only end up having one board meeting for it to be approved before it can, before it's required to be to the, to the state. And if we don't approve it in June, in order for me to get it to DOE by June 30th, starting July 1, the district has to absorb every cost that the grant currently funds until we have it approved into the DOE. So, my message for you today, or my request really, is please, if there's anything that you have questions about, about the IDA grant or anything like that, let's work it out before we get to that June 18th board meeting and we, and we, I can't risk it not being approved that day is, is the point. So, last year, we received it on May 11th, so I'm projecting that this year, we'll get it on May 10th. Hopefully, before then, that's never fast enough for the May board meeting, so that's why we do it in June. And that's it.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
Just remind us...
Yes.
...that week before, when the stuff goes out, you know, the 10-day thing, just maybe a quick note to board members, this is the meeting where we need this approved and because of the very short timeline and all that, because, you know, it's just a lot going on in everybody's lives.
Yeah.
And so, that way, if we do have questions, we can get with you ahead of time. Just a thought on that.
Absolutely.
Since we can't do it in May because there's not enough time.
Right.
I was going to suggest moving it to May, but we already covered that, so.
What I can do, and this would be up to you, we can do a draft of what we think it's going to be, but that's not finalized, of course...
Sure.
...until it comes, so.
Ms. Townsend?
Look, I mean, if there's, if there's a hurricane that comes, we're going to have a special meeting to deal with that hur, hurricane. Why on earth would we not set a special meeting if we need, need to? I mean, that's, that's an artificial crisis. I mean, I, I mean, I get that there's a, we have a regular, the regular board meetings irrelevant. Set a spec, special meeting if we have to and deal, deal with it. It's like a, you know, so what, we have to drive, drive here? Yeah, I mean, like, our, our one board, board meeting a month should not drive this process. It should be the other way around.
It's, it's not hindered us in the past as far as getting it approved. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we only do have that one opportunity. We've never had a situation where it wasn't going to be approved.
Well, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that if, for some reason, we need to schedule a special meeting to approve, approve it in 10, 10 minutes, we need to do, to do, do that. We should not be locked into one date.
Ms. Wilson?
In addressing that issue, and I understand your concern, I, I think, if, as long as we get the materials in advance, it shouldn't be a problem. So, we have an opportunity to look them over and then discuss them and folks can even ask questions, obviously, before the meeting.
Absolutely.
So, we have an opportunity to address that. Now, if it becomes a crisis, then we just need to know about it so we can address it at that time.
Ms. Fields, Ms. Miller?
I have a couple of questions about your presentation on page four of the IDA grant. And you might not have this information today and it's fine, but can you give, give us the percentages by category of the funds? Like, how much, what's the percentage of personnel, charter school allocation, private schools, the whole section, section there? Don't need it right now, but you can provide that. And then...
It's in this part.
Is it by percentage?
Yes.
It's not by percentage.
It's not by the amount.
That's a good call, Ms. Fields. I could have added percentages.
That's fine.
I'll never do it.
Yes, ma'am. And then, the other question that I have, if you can, it might be somewhere that I'm missing, is the number of ESC pre-K students.
That's not in here. Go on, look that up. Thank you. I have a bunch of questions.
Ms. Miller?
The Medicaid billing, can you, because that's relatively new to this district. Can you tell us how, like, what we're billing for Medicaid and are the services, because I don't know how much we're billing? Like, are we billing support services to Medicaid? What are we billing that we, because that's, we haven't done that for a long period of time.
Not at the level we're doing that anymore.
Right. Because we had to hire staff to do that, right? We have an extra staff person?
We have one, we have a senior manager that has outside of it. That's, that's the additional staff. We bill for all of speech and language services, psychological evaluations, social work services, nursing services, and transportation. We recently started in, about six months ago, eight months ago?
We, at 10, we started planning it two years ago and I think about six months ago we started collecting, collecting some funds.
We're, we're doing a little bit here or there with some behavior services, but that takes a little bit more detail and we're not, so we're working on that.
Yeah, because I would, just from my experience, that's probably your largest expense per hour services are behavior supports.
It is, but the, the interesting thing is, the reimbursement Medicaid for that is not as substantial.
Right. Well, that's why private providers are going out.
Our, our biggest bang for our buck as far as Medicaid is transportation and speech language.
Check and connect, I don't know if everyone knows what that is, but the fact that it's moving to middle schools is positive. Are you getting more money from Florida Gulf Coast to do that in that grant? Are you having to allocate the funds already with that grant?
We're using the $50,000 that we have to do that and then, once we get a little bit more going in the years to come, we can ask for more money out of that grant. There was a little bit more available, but we didn't have enough to, it could have gone up to like $65,000, I think, was the amount. And because we were a little bit late in the process of getting it all together, we didn't need to go to the full $65,000, but we can get more. And that one is interesting because it goes from October to October. So, it's, the time, timelines are a little bit different on that one.
And the last question I have, can we have, like, I would like to see the detailed contract services for $4 million and what we're spending $4 million on. Is that something you can provide?
Sure.
And the travel expenses of $312,000, are we paying city travel or is that, what are we paying under travel?
That's all of our in-county mileage for all of our itinerants, plus anything out of county that they have to go to or we have to go to for staff development or any kind of, you know, we have a lot of our, a lot of our specialized services with our SLPs or OTs, PTs, they have to go to the working with the experts meetings across the state because those are specialized groups, so they go out of county quite a bit for some of those. Most of it is in-county travel.
And that's something we contract with them to pay?
No, that's as an employee we're allocating.
Reimbursed, so it's mileage what we're paying?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And I can, I can give you a list of our current contracts and where we're spending, break, that breakdown. We are in the process, literally, just had a big meeting last week of starting to draft those renewals. So, you'll start seeing a lot of those coming through eAgenda, or the big ones, in the next couple of months as well.
And do you bid those big ones out? Do we have multiple people bid on those behavior contracts and those?
Not at this time because we've not ever moved to any new companies that we didn't already have since I've been here. So, if we got to a point where we were wanting to add some companies or anything, we'd start looking at that. But right now, we're not bidding out for anything. We are going to, this year, do an RFP for our private school speech and language services because we're not, those companies that we've been work, or one of the companies we've been working with is not providing the level of service that's necessary. And so, we've been increasing their money over the last couple of years and so now, we're at a point where we want to expand beyond the companies we have and so we're going to do an RFP this year for private school services.
I think with behavior, there's more people in the business now and I have a great respect for people we use. I use them personally. But I think for competitive rates and how many dollars we're spending in just that category that we may, should look at what others can provide. That's all, sorry.
Ms. Cunningham?
Your hand up first.
Doesn't matter because I'm getting mine answered as we go around.
Okay. Here we go. Okay. For the ones that you indicated with the SEDNET and Fidlers, you indicated that we also are the flow-through for Highlands and Hardy Counties, correct?
Yes.
So, my question is, on the backup information that you provided, does that include them as well or is this only our portion?
That includes Highlands and Hardy.
This does?
Yes.
So, really, of the amount that's shown here, there's only a portion of it that's ours?
Correct. And I can give you a breakdown about it.
I would like to know that because that shows what dollars we actually use in Polk versus the other two counties, if you could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
I'm back on page four as well. And excuse my question because you may have already answered it somewhere else. Under contracted services for IDA, K through 12, behavior support, are those contracted services on-site all the time or, you know, can you explain that a little more? They're not our behavior interventionists that we employ as a...
No. Behavior interventionist are school-based personnel that are funded out of Title I. So, those are...
Okay.
Our division trains that staff, but we don't have anything to do with those positions or any kind of funding, nothing. Behavior support that we pay for out of IDA are our board-certified behavior analysts, which come from Andrea Holiday Services, Envo Progressives Therapy, and ABC Alternative Behavior Concepts, which is Keith and Cheryl Jordan. It's either those, those people themselves or their staff, which is their, their board-certified behavior analysts, registered behavior techs, RBTs. Those are all school-based in classrooms all the time. Of course, they're participating in, the BCBA's will participate in IEP meetings and, you know, district administrative meetings with us, but the majority of their personnel are hands-on, boots-on-the-ground in classrooms, working with students on a daily basis.
And then, my second question is a slide below that. On these contracted services, how do we analyze progress and accountability and measure any of those contracted services?
Depends on the type of the service. We get, every invoice that they provide, they have to provide the services and the students they see, things that they've done.
Right.
And we, it depends on the type. Nursing, for the most part, vision, speech, language, those things, if the kids are getting their services, you know, it's like any of our other personnel, we, we go with it unless we have a specific problem with a case or an employee, things like that. Behavior gets a little bit more difficult because what one person would consider improvement with a student, somebody else might see a difference.
So, there's not a tool, per se?
It's individual student-based...
Okay.
...for the most part. Now, there was a company we were with when I first got here that we were not receiving, we didn't feel as a, as a leadership team in our division, we were receiving good services from because they weren't responsive to our requests. They weren't turning in invoices and paperwork on time, things like that. They were, they were being difficult in conversations, so we just decided, no more Um, they were, they were being difficult in conversations, so we just decided no more with them. But for the most part, they're all working with us, and we've not changed any of those companies or added anybody in the last several years, because we're growing so much. And, and though really is our big one, because we have behavior with them, we have S L Ps with them, we have O Ts and P Ts. So they are, they're making some money off of us for sure, but they're also a great partner, and they are responsive, and we ask for something, they get it for us. If we have a problem with a staff member, they're quick to replace them, um, they're, they're a great partner to work with. It's great customer service and, and partnership and meeting our needs, so.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just doing some quick math, it looks like there's a hundred and five million here. Does that sound right? And so, what, how much do we have, do we know how much we're spending on paras? You said they came out of the general fund?
Well, some classroom paras come out of the local funds, and then student-specific paras or para LPNs come out of I D E A.
So what would we add in addition to this budget, what would we add for E S E-specific paras? Do we have some rough idea? If you don't, that's okay, I don't want to put you on the spot.
We currently have about a hundred and, a hundred and seventy-one student-specific paras or LPNs. It's thirty-three LP. Okay, thirty-three LP, I'm sorry. And the way that works is if a student moves in with an I E P that has that need, or an I E P team determines that they need a student-specific para, then we allocate that, um, through the I E P process. So it's kind of a.
So we don't, we have a rough idea what that dollar value is? I don't have my calculator with me, I'm not that good.
The dollar value for student specifics?
Yeah, I'm just wondering. And I'll, I'll explain why in just a moment. So that's the dollar value right there, seventeen?
Yeah, I mean, we have to go and, and pull up each of those, because then you have the difference in salaries and things like that.
Okay, so, um, the reason I ask that question is, we, you know, in the late sixties, the United States was unequivocally the leader in public education worldwide. Today, I don't even think in most cases we're in the top twenty-five, you know, throughout the world. And so it's been a pretty rapid backwards descent, and the question is why? And I, and it, it frustrates me that we are, you know, that our leaders, not all of them, of course, but generally our leaders, aren't reaching out to the professionals in the, in the area and asking the question, what, what's the problem? Why aren't we addressing those issues? So, you know, I, I've kind of come to the conclusion that they, we need to apply a little pressure from our community. So I've been visiting some of the, uh, local, you know, Rotary Clubs and Kiwanis, and talking about the issue, just to get the conversation started. And it's an incredibly well-received conversation. I mean, the community understands that we have a crisis here, and, and how do we address it? And they understand it's going to require more, more funding. So, I, I asked those questions because the better idea, I have what that number is. It, it makes it, it makes the discussion more useful. And if you, if you don't have it, I understand, that's okay. And I'll figure something out, and I'll guesstimate something, and I'll tell, I'll just say it's an estimate. But one other thing very quickly before, uh, Jason, again, if you don't recall, that's okay. You, in the last budget you, you gave us, you added some items that Mrs. Fortney said she thought we needed in the classroom. Do you remember what the cost of that was on hand? If you don't, again, I don't want to put you on the spot. Twenty million, okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, when we do the paras and we budget for them, because we, we look over time, as far as years past, how many student-specific paras or LPNs do we have to allocate from year to year? And so when we're planning the grant, we budget a certain amount. We base on about fifteen thousand per position.
Okay.
So if we did fifteen thousand times, what, a hundred and, or two hundred and four positions, that'd be your amount. And I don't have a calculator, but.
Two oh four times fifteen, fifteen K? Okay, thank you.
This afternoon, I can get you to do that, right after this meeting, I can send you the exact information.
Mr. Townsend?
Two oh four, is that, that's, what's that number? That's the.
That's the, we have, we currently have a hundred and seventy-one para-professionals and thirty-three LPNs out of I D E A. Students specific. Those are student-specific or specialized classroom stuff, not general classroom paras.
So someone asked that question about paras on both sides. Like, did we have more paras five years, years ago than we have now, in a general sense? Like, in, in just general paras, is that correct? Yeah, like five, like, what, my, my understanding is we've eliminated significant number of those positions over time. Is that correct?
No, are you talking about specifically E S E paras or general?
No, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm, I'm, I'm going to talk about both, but, but our, our general para population.
Just as our teacher, um, numbers have increased, our para numbers have increased as well. We don't necessarily have a true reduction in paras, I wouldn't say that.
Right, well, it, I would like to see what, what the number was, you know, I, I sort of asked about this a, a little while, while ago. I would like to see some historical tracking on those, on those positions. On the I D E A side, is that number, is that two oh, two oh four, has that been fairly consistent the last few years? Like, I mean, it's like two oh four each year?
No, it's not too, I'm not specific, but generally, we budget for about two hundred positions.
Okay.
Hundred and fifty to two hundred, depending on the year.
Right, but the need goes up, correct? I mean, I mean, the need has not been static, I would assume.
Correct, but what we have gotten better at doing is students who have, might have received a student-specific para when they were in elementary school, but as they've aged, have acclimated to what they need to do and learn those skills, that they don't need the support of a student-specific anymore. We've gotten better about I E P teams going in and reviewing that and removing that service. So there were some students over the years that would keep their para until they were aging out, and they didn't even need the para as a high school student. And so we were spending money on that that we didn't need to spend, but over the last couple of years, we've gotten really better with our teams about really looking at that, looking at those students and getting them off the, the service away from the student, making them more independent, and then cutting our costs in that area.
I mean, I would like to know, I would like a comparison, say, four years, year, years ago, how many total paras we have, and how many total, total we have now. That, that would be, if someone could come up with that at some point, at, on, I A-funded and overall funded. And also, just to follow up on this, do you have a list of all of the pri- private schools that we provide fu- funding to?
Yes.
Can I have that list, please?
Sure.
It, it name, names of, and all that?
Ms. Haron?
I just want to clarify, Dr. Frank, you said two hundred and four times fifteen, you know, is it? I just wanted, that does not include benefits, so there's another. I just wanted, like, another cost.
What do you do, thirty percent?
Probably a little more, I think.
Thirty-three?
Jason, can you get that?
I.
Yeah.
Let's defer that one.
Jason, would you?
No, 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 no worries, I already, I already, I already factored that.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, and we'll get the other items that the board members requested. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Okay, the next item you have coming before you will be our charter, we have two charter schools coming for, so we have Vicki Mason, Carolyn, and Candy Amato. Candy is acting right now in the place, because Melissa Brady, um, has left the district to run other positions, so Candy's acting, which is underneath Carolyn's umbrella.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. So Candy's been doing this job for exactly nine days, seven, today marks day seven. She's an expert, so. Good morning, and, um, thank you for hopefully being patient with me while I navigate these waters of charter. So I have with me, obviously, Carolyn, and then Vicki, who, um, has done a lot of the research in the background, um, and all of the charter applications. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to her, and she will share.
Can you also have a packet with you?
Good morning, it's a pleasure to be back in Polk County. I see a lot of new faces and some familiar faces, just to give you some background. I started authorizing charter schools in two thousand and three, so this is my sixteenth year of evaluating charter applications. So I have been brought to Polk County, I think, the last six times, to facilitate the charter review team. So I do also want to tell you, um, in preparing for this meeting, I found a few more errors in our paperwork, so, uh, our documentation. So I'll make sure that they get corrected, we have some formatting errors and things like that. We have new faces, I'm going to have to go rather quickly, but I'm trying to at least give information to those that are new to the charter school application process. We are required to evaluate the charter applications, we have ninety days, and we do have to use an instrument that was developed by the Department of Education. We have a great charter review team, I think we have twenty-three people participating this time. Two meetings that we conduct after they do their initial interviews, their evaluations. We actually have two meetings. We have a third meeting this year that was very productive, that I hope that we'll do continuously, is that we got to meet with the budget department. I got to meet with them, with the department charter school, and that was an extra time in which we could really go over the budget. We have group discussions, really intense group discussions. Members have an opportunity to advocate if they want to vote to approve, um, and then the voters, uh, the participants, they vote anonymously. So we do not know what, um, the C R T members vote. You have your key district staff participating, financial budget staff, charter school department, community members. We have two community members actively engaged this cycle. Of course, I act as your consultant, and that is what the C R T is made up of. To serve as the external auditor, or not auditor, but evaluator, I think is a benefit to your process, I could simply look at the merit of the applications. I, I do a lot of due diligence, probably that your staff doesn't have time to do, and so I play a real key role in doing that. We're, step one regarding completed, we reviewed the process, um, the charter team has made their recommendations to the superintendent. Today, we're presenting those findings to you, and then the next step will be to, um, you go and make the kind of decision with the superintendent's recommendation, which is April twenty-third. The charter statutes, I'm not going to read to, that, you to, I'm not going to read them to you, but I do need to let you know that there are certain statutes in which govern this process for those that are new to this, um, this endeavor. And we must look at the guiding principles, we have to make sure there's a detailed curriculum pro- plan, there's goals and objectives to measure student progress. The reading curriculum is there, and we have differentiated instruction. The annual financial plan is always paramount to this process, looking for balanced budgets, looking to ensure they're solvent. And also, um, we have to carefully anal- analyze the governing board members, the education service providers, looking at the academic and financial history of those parties. The budget, I think probably we recognize is the most important part of this process. Many schools across the state as well as the country, the first years are very difficult, and it's because of the budget. And so we play, pay close attention to that budget. We have two charter applications before you today that were evaluated, American Classical Charter, as well as Bridge Prep, Bridge Prep Academy of Polk. These schools, uh, we also had two other applications that withdrew. We had Miascula, Montessori, as well as Navigator Academy Leadership. Just a quick note about Miascula, there was a lot of passion in that application, and hopefully they're going to come back, because there is a strong desire to serve their community. Um, these two applicants that we present to you today are both paid schools, one is a classical literature program, and the other is an extended second language program, serving seven hundred and twenty-eight students and a thousand students respectively. One of the things, as a new board member, I'd like to emphasize is that strong governance and capacity is something that we're looking at, and quality authorizing is making sure that we look at these two components. And, um, these were issues in this application cycle, I have to tell you, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Also, quality authorizing, um, you have to vet, you have to probe, and you have to do your due diligence. And I think that this team did a really good job this year of doing due diligence. Sometimes what you see on paper is not always what happens if you do some due diligence, and sometimes it's not what you see in the interviews as well. And as I said, we, um, looked at the due diligence, and we feel that's an important component. When the applicant fills out their documents, their worksheets at the end of the application, the, um, model application actually says, a sponsor should review the portfolio of schools operated by the applicant through governing board or E S P to determine if the academic and financial performance demonstrates the capacity to operate a high-quality charter school. So the application process itself is telling us, look at those, um, worksheets that they submitted, and see, um, what their capacity looks like to govern. The capacity interview with the governing board, and this is all from N A S F A, the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, and they're saying assess, understanding their capacity, um, gauge, if they're familiar with your community, resolve any major questions that you might have had during a written proposal, and provide any additional evidence to either support or deny the application. And I believe that your interviews are at least a good forty-five minutes to it all along, so there's a lot of information change there. In evaluating the charter application, I do want you to know that, like I said, I say this every year, I don't know the politics in Polk County, which is to my benefit. I simply look at the merit of the charter application. The applicant's interview is also very important, the capacity to govern, and of course, the due diligence that was done. That was all taken into consideration when made in the recommendation by the C R T, C R T team. So, we're going to start, and I'm sorry that I'm going to go rather quickly, through the strengths, and then we'll, um, it's concerns for both of the applications. And if you want to, at the end, we'll have questions, or if you need to stop, I don't know what your preference is, but if you have the questions built in at the end. So American Classical Charter application, um, it presents a clear mission, it plans through the core knowledge sequence, it has Latin instruction, utilizes the district people progression plan, and has a ray of mission-specific education goals. It stipulates that it's not going to request or require students I E P five oh four plan or socioeconomic status during enrollment process, and that's been an issue from time to past, so that was important to us. Plans to hire a para-professional bilingual, has a detailed character education program, and the governing board will perform ongoing assessments of the school and their ongoing programs. It proposes to join the Florida Consortium of Public Schools, so they have access to the, um, approved administration and teacher evaluations. It, um, will have, it states that its general classical education requires extensive, um, cumulative professional development, and it strives to have an active volunteer program. As far as safety, it has established a single point of access, which is a recommendation. It provides an extensive list of financial controls, and it will provide access to the annual budget and independent audit on the school's website. Concerns, and this is where we spent a little bit more time, because those are the things that brought attention to the C R T team. And we feel that it failed to provide a clear description of the students the charter school intends to serve. It had real conflicting information. It would say that it was going to have an open enrollment, but yet it kept on coming back to two issues. They wanted the public to know that it was not a reform school, and that, um, it was not an academic recovery school. And that was the language we kept on hearing throughout the interview, as well as the program, um, of the narrative. It, um, provided inappropriate provisions to our students, it could be given enrollment preference, those kind of things can be corrected at, um, contract. It didn't present a plan that really described its educational program in detail, it was only six pages, and so there were still questions at the end of, of that discussion. Had outdated research to support the proposed educational program, and its schedule did not include ninety minutes of uninterrupted reading time, which is required by law. The curriculum plan, it stipulated that it was going to have a language arts period in the seventh grade schedule, but when you looked at the staffing plan and budget, there was no Merrill J, little or junior reading, uh, language arts teacher. It was providing annual goals at the end of three-year, I mean, it was providing goals at the end of three-year period, it wasn't showing his annual progress, now they were going to assist student progress annually. It was re- uh, referencing using Div rules, and that's no longer valid, uh, Instamad. And it could drive, it fails to provide information specific to the formulation of baseline data. It said something that it expected to have income, its incoming baseline of students would be lower than it would like it to see. And so we were very confused as far as what their student population was going to look like, because of conflicting language in the narrative. It also provides conflicting information regarding the E S C population. It said it was going to mirror the district at twelve percent, but year, year one it had twenty-one percent of its students, and at year two through five, twenty-two percent of its students in E S C services. And when you adjust that budget, looking at the revenue they, they would, um, generate, it did impact the budget negatively, negatively, as we went back and tried to make some adjustments. They really said that their gifted service, student services was going to be in their natural setting. setting because of their curriculum. We think that it failed to provide detailed plans for monitoring and evaluating progress and success of the ELL students. It fails to describe the appropriate staffing plan for ELL and sometimes it was mixing English language learners with students with disabilities within the narrative and the team picked up on that in several places. They did not provide articles of incorporation by law, and this was particularly interesting considering that they are replicating an existing school, so they could have at least given some draft copies. The 501(c)(3), we understand, they said it's an expensive process, we understand why they didn't start that, but they could have provided some documents that would have given us some more insight as to what their governance structure looked like. They provided conflicting information regarding the number of board minutes, the narrative stated three, but yet they listed four. They failed to provide information regarding how the board members have been and will be selected, including their term limits and selection officers. And they said that they will select board members from the community and so I took that meaning that they want all the board would be from Polk, but they really only have two members from Polk County. You can't insist that those are from Polk County, but I'm just taking from what the narrative said. The management, this was interesting, the organizational charts reflecting the Classical Charter Management Group and the School Development Group were on the same line of authority as the ACCA Board of Directors, meaning they were given equal power, the board was, to these other organizations. We feel that they did not provide a viable and adequate staffing plan. There were at least four positions that we found that we could not find in their staffing plan, which is a negative impact to their budget. And they didn't provide any personnel plans or any timeline of development for those plans. Again, this is replicating an existing schools and we thought that we could see at least some draft personnel.
Is that an existing school, the Mason School?
Yes, it is. Thank you for clarifying that. We're not convinced that it provided enough detail to tell how it was going to achieve a racial ethic balance and it failed to provide any existing evidence of the demand for the school. And the application itself has said not available at this time and at the interview, the applicant confirms that it has not done anything to gather evidence for the demand of the school. The facilities, they're not telling us detailed information regarding the estimate of a cost, anticipated facility needs, and we didn't know the desired location of the school as they were explaining the facility needs. Transportation, it says in the application, it will not be providing transportation unless there is a demand where they don't have enough kids enrolled, then they might consider transportation. There has been some cases that says that you don't have to provide transportation, but this is a concern when you're serving ELC students. And also, they did not budget any expenses or revenue for transportation in their budget. Budget. We are saying that the budget is not solid for all five years, the proposed operation. It assumes an increase in revenues in years two through five at 1.97 to 4.85% of revenue. And as we know, a history of flat funding in the state, we generally don't see those kind of increases in revenue. It relies on $601,815, which is 13% of the projected budget for aftercare, using that as part of their revenue and that's not guaranteed. It relies on forgiven fees or donations from the school financial services Classical Charter Management Group and School Development Group at $1.6 billion over five years' time. And it also relies on a $165,000 loan, which is not guaranteed, there's no paperwork to support that they received this loan. When asked if they didn't get it, Mr. Gott said he would use his MasterCard or his bank account. Haven't seen that one before. So, those are all legitimate concerns regarding solvency of the budget. And they said they're going to revisit their monthly financials at their board meetings, but we've confirmed they're unwilling to have four board meetings per year, so they would not be able to present them monthly as stated. Our recommendation as the team was to deny. This was zero to approve, 12 to deny. Bridge Prep Academy. There were a lot of application, there was numerous cut and paste issues with this application, but we do want to go on record that that was a lot of reason that the CRT made its recommendation, but it was difficult, especially in section three where that was the educational section where there was a lot of cut and paste. The mission, it presents a clear mission statement, students they say will be bilingual, bilingual, bicultural, from as they progress from kindergarten to eighth grade. It expects to achieve a composition reflective of the community it serves, plans to implement a technology-rich environment, and has the extended second language model. It does outline its reading curriculum, so that we can see the differential instruction in terms of reading. It does state that it will utilize data to assess the effectiveness of its instructional program as well as its goals and objectives. It will use promotional standards set forth by the district and it also is not requesting any IEP or any of that type of information during the lottery or application process for its exceptional students. English language learners, it will be requirements for identification eligibility for these students, also it will follow the district's English language learners plan. It is implementing a school-wide positive behavioral program and it is going to implement the district's code of student conduct. The governing board also says that it will be responsible for the recruiting, interviewing, and selecting the school leader. It does utilize the approved horizontal documents for evaluation tools. It supports professional development needs of its staff, it provides an enrollment timeline, and it does describe an effective lottery process. It does have a parent representative as required by law, has lots of activities for parental involvement, and it does have input servers, it does have a system in place for eligibility initiatives of benefits, and it does have a comprehensive list of financial controls. The concerns. They base their concerns on, again, what was from the application as well as from the interview and due diligence. The number of students graded or served in year one and for the subsequent years, they said they're basing it on past experience. And do and due diligence, we're finding that this historically is not accurate. Even in the 2018 management responses, they have three schools that have deficit fund balance, their own management response said that it was because they did not get anticipated student enrollment or they had decreased student enrollment. The actual document shows some other history of projections not being met. They do provide a separate schedule for English and language arts, this is a repeated concern that we had last time, and the research that they provide will support the 33813 zip code. The team felt that there was nominal research regarding its standard school language model. We felt that we didn't quite understand the model, other than it was just an extra day hour of the day with Spanish instruction. It says states that the students will receive FSA-aligned instruction and references the biology and it should be EOC. It proposes to use calculus to assess kindergarten students beginning of the year and the end of the year and calculus is only a beginning of the year assessment, it's not a secondary a second time, and it references science of CAP 2.0. Exceptional students, we feel there was some conflicting information regarding the ELC population. We were quite sure and confident of the numbers of those students to be served, which would have a negative impact on the budget when we looked at it again. And we've asked, this is the second time of repeated concern, but they say they're going to have a consultative supportive and co-teaching. And at the interview, we asked, "Which model are you going to have?" because they have different implications as far as salary and staffing. And they said they could have all three depending on the students that they receive. So we're still not quite sure of the model which they're going to serve students. We do believe that it is going to be an 80/20 model, but it's still a little confusing. The governments, this was very difficult to decipher as an outsider, but all other governing boards meet at the same time on the same date. And two of the governing boards serve on all of the, two governing board members serve on all the governing boards and it's sometimes they're the chair and it's sometimes they're the chair. So it's very interesting how they conduct these meetings, I'm not sure. They group it not by their governing boards but by counties, and we tried to get a better understanding of that at the interview. Even looking at their minutes, I looked at Dave Broward, Palm Devol, Collier meetings from 2/28 to 1/16/19, I'm sorry, 2/28/18 to 1/16/19. There were seven meetings. Of those seven meetings, all of them conducted Palm Beach County business, but yet only two of those board meeting minutes even had Palm Beach governing boards listed as governing board members for those meetings even though, and I do have those documents. And I have, just to be clear, just to let you know, I have, in due diligence, read all of their board meetings and so I do have the documentation to support what we're stating. Also, looking at Bridge Prep Academy schools were the lowest of the DOJ's schools for the 217, 18 school year. Then there were smart management schools in 16, 17, one of those schools was stated and then to 15, 16, another school was in the lowest 300. So, concerns, we feel that they did not budget accurately for all their staffing needs, which has a negative impact to the budget. It proposes to hire qualified personnel, however, in looking at their SPAR data, a great majority of their schools do not have highly qualified teachers and that is in the document, the evaluation instrument. It didn't, and the evidence of existing demand for the school, there were three letters of support. They did do a survey, 405 people, but it was of all Polk County and not pertinent to just the particular area in which they were looking at putting a school on. Transportation, it fails to provide evidence that they will transfer all students. Reviewing their annual budgets for 2018, only one out of 11 of their schools actually has transportation budgeted in their budget. So, we have reservations whether or not they will be transporting students and they failed to provide language regarding the mandates established by Senate 26. The last is the budget. The budget assumes a 2.5 increase revenue for years two through five. Again, this is a repeated concern and something that with flat funding, the financial folks were very worried about. It relies on before and after care of $156,000. It includes a $100,000 loan for SMART, their education service provider. So we feel that it fails to provide a realistic assessment of projected source of revenue and expenses that assure the financial viability of the school. And remembering that doing a due diligence, the actual application tells us to go back and look at what their history looks like. And in 2005, Bridge Prep Academy, Inc., which is out of Miami, governs four schools out of Miami, had given money to the amount of $212,994 to six schools outside of Dade County. In 2016, some of that was paid and they had a balance of $177,109 that Bridge Prep Academy, Inc. in Miami had given to schools outside of Miami. I have a letter that was provided from Miami-Dade, the chief auditor, asking for advice from the state legal counsel, Mr. Matthew Meers. And on October 21st, 2016, Mr. Meers stated that he concluded that the statute supported that you cannot transfer money from its school and run district to schools in other districts. It'd be like, "I was given money to Polk County, they got it excess and now they're going to give it to other schools." And so, when I looked at the 2017 balance, all of those monies were paid back to Bridge Prep Academy, Inc. But I do need to bring to your attention, and looking at the 2018 financial findings, Bridge Prep Academy, Inc. has given $75,000 to Devol and Palm Beach, it has given $375,000, again, schools outside of their district. And I do have the actual pages from the financial audits. So the recommendation was to deny this application and it was one person to approve, 11 to deny. And so, fast and furious, I apologize.
Actually, my question is for Mr. Bridges. In the application, there's an indication that they will serve all students and I'm assuming they're going to do that on a lottery basis, is that?
Which one are we talking about?
Bridgeport?
Yes, they have a lottery process.
Can we, I guess my concern would be, can we in a contract compel charter schools to retain those students except for the cases that come before the school board and then because they, the students have done something that is, you know, exceptionally egregious?
Charter schools do not have the legal authority to expel students, only the district can do that.
So they can't send them to another school?
They, there are circumstances under which a student might leave, for instance, if a school was unable to meet their particular academic needs under an IEP. But the charter school, they can have parent contracts and whatnot that require certain things of students and parents if they want to go there. But when it comes to disciplinary matters, they do not have the authority to expel students, they cannot do that.
But they could write it into a contract with the parent and use that, and I'm not singling out Bridgeport, but in general.
We, there's been considerable discussion about how, just how valid those things are, you know, whether a charter school can, other than expelling a child, can arrange for the child to no longer be welcome at the school. We, you have those contracts, they certainly demonstrate the spirit of the school, whether those things would be enforceable is a question.
And my concern isn't that they're willing to take students, not, again, not Bridgeport, I'm talking in general, that charter schools aren't willing to take students on a lottery basis, the challenge is keeping them and not pushing them off onto, back to their schools.
And that's the perpetual issue that we address. We refer to it as counseling out.
Yes.
And it's a perpetual issue that we address with charter schools and I'm sure that it is a temptation with which they have to grapple routinely.
And can we creatively address that issue? Do you have a sense of that?
I think that we do.
Okay.
I think we've got a, that's something that our charter department has diligently pursued through the years to stop that from happening to the extent that we are able. The bottom line is, no child can be compelled to go to a charter school and if a child who was enrolled at a charter school shows up at a public school for enrollment and does not, does not state that they believe they were excluded for some wrongful purpose, we're going to enroll them and educate them and we may not know that even existed.
Mr. Townsend?
I mean, I think there, again, this is a sort of theoretical discussion, but two potential things, I mean, the questions that are out there is going to come with vouchers too. The way to do what you're talking about is say, "We won't take them back." And to say, "If you're in a charter school or you're in a voucher school, you don't come back this year." Or, you know, that's, I'm not advocating that, I'm saying that's about the only way to get to what you're doing if there's no place for the kids to go when they leave. I mean, that's one thing you do. Or, you could do on a geographic basis what the choice folks in Tallahassee seem to say you can do. I mean, that's, this is the basis of my Lake Wales idea, which is, you draw a zone around it and you make them have to opt out, like it's rather than opting, you know, opting in. And that is essentially the Jefferson County model. And I think that is potentially something that's interesting to explore, but the only way you're going to, I mean, Discovery got rid of 60 kids last year, 60. And, you know, 30 directly, 30, you know, voluntary, early. We're not stopping us. I mean, there's nothing we do that stops opt-in. And our own magnet schools have done it to some, some degree as well. So, I mean, that's, you know.
But that's absolutely something that we can continue to address within the confines of the law and I take Mr. Townsend's point, but I don't believe that public school districts have the authority to refuse to provide services to a student. to a student who comes to us. Once, once again, the law, from its, from its outset, said that no child can be compelled to go to a charter school. What that means is that if a child doesn't want to go to a charter school, and they show up at their, at their zone school or a school that they would otherwise be able to attend, I think we're compelled to enroll them.
But I would, I would just say that we're bending the definition of public education six ways to Sunday. It would be an interesting thing to test, like, not just theoretically, you know, I, I.
Oh, I, I get, I get your point.
Again, again, I'm, I'm not even saying I would advocate doing it if it was possible, but it would be interesting to test.
I, I get your point.
Ms. Millard, Ms. Fields?
There's one thing that I think that we could do, speaking from someone who's been on the other side for students who are leaving charter, they're bringing our staff into the schools, and some parents are called into meetings, and they, and without knowing, you know, what's happening, not all schools, and I'm not gonna name the schools here, but this is a practice, and they'll say, our model no longer fits for you, but look, we have this great school down the road, and they're here, and they're gonna tell you what they can provide you. I say we stop doing that. Like, I don't know, it's too easy. And sometimes the parents don't understand they're out until they're out, until that meeting. Like, there's no, or we should set some precedent on how they deliver that. I understand it's a contract, and that's what they do, they're contract-based schools, similar to our magnet schools. But for us to participate in that manner, and these parents be blindsided, which happens a lot of the time, that maybe we need to look at how we're participating in that removal process. I mean, that would be the, the legal way, and I think the ethical way to help those families who don't understand that process.
Ms. Fields?
I wanna go back to the applications. I have a couple of questions since you've spoken. The concerns as it relates to the performance of two of the Bridge Prep schools. How many schools do they have overall?
I believe they told us they have sixteen, but that's because some of them are middle and high school campuses. So I believe, but I, 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 I think the number may be more like eleven, but, and they've got a couple more that are open this year, so I, they told us sixteen at the interview, so I'm not sure if they don't have, each of them does not have their own NSID, never I know that.
But do we have a history of those other schools and how they perform academically?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, not today, maybe, but if, if I could have that.
A history of all their schools?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing that I'm remembering, when this school came before us, they were willing to do either Lakeland, originally is where they had talked about having the school, and then they talked about east, East Polk. And I guess my question is, I think the gist of this application has merit, but there are some things that would need to be answered and taken care of. And so my question would be to the superintendent, have you, I'm sure that you, you reviewed this, and are you making a recommendation today, or are you gonna wait and give it to us on the twenty-third, when the school board meets, but both of these, not just prep, but the other one as well?
Yes, I'm making a recommendation, and I appreciate the work of the committee and the, both of the organizations. And you brought up a very valid point, because when they came before us, about a month ago, I believe, they did say Bridge Prep, I'm speaking of, that they would locate more so for the overcrowding purpose in the east area. When they had the application, a Lakeland zip, so they're gonna address that. And I noticed that they, it wasn't, it was brought out in the presentation as well. My recommendation for Bridge Prep would be, let's allow that to go through the contracting phase and see if they clear up the governance issue and the budget issue, because from what I heard, they cleared up the budget issue once before. And so they, we, we need to get more details from them in the, in the contracting phase, and also the phase of where are they gonna locate, because they had the Lakeland, but we need to allow them to make sure, because they told us they were gonna do in the east, so we need to make sure that gets addressed. The mandate was Senate Bill Seventy Twenty-Six, I, you know, that was recent, so that's a mandate that has to be put in there, so that needs to be addressed in the contracting phase, as well as issues with the governance. So I, you know, my recommendation for Bridge Prep would be to allow them to go to the contracting phase. If they do not, you know, suffice those areas, then we can't move it forward. My recommendation for American Classical would stand with the committee as well for deny, based on the fact that we can't guarantee loans to get us, get them started up. So I believe Wes can help, you know, give me some more insight on the contracting phase if we move forward.
Yes, ma'am. What, what have, once you have approved the application, we have an accelerated timeline to get to them a, a draft contract for their consideration. And we can, we have to use the model contract the state uses. There, there is a certain amount of discretion that we have that we can change and modify it. And if we, if we agree to things during the contracting process, then, of course, it comes to the school board for approval. If we don't, the Department of Education offers mediation services to try to resolve any disputes. If they're unable to do so, then they, they can refer it to the Division of Administrative Hearings, and an administrative law judge has the final authority over, over what should be in that contract.
Mr. Wilson?
He mentioned about Seventy Twenty-Six.
Seventy Twenty, that's when they have to have, like, the guardians and all of that in there.
Oh, okay. So, Ms. Vicki, thank you. You, you always do a wonderful job of vetting these applications and reading through everything. It's frankly amazing, so I appreciate all you do. I, I just wonder, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, did you get a, I, I have two concerns. My first concern is, is that we had agreed, I think we all agree, I believe that's true, that we would like to see this in the northeast part of the county and not in Lakeland. So that's my first concern. The, the other concern I have is, there's a lottery process. Did you get a sense that they were following that process? And number two, did you get a sense that they were keeping students once they were there generally? Or, or did you, did you see any, any evidence that that was or wasn't happening?
I didn't see, the lottery process was there. I didn't see any evidence that they were trying to restrict their student population. I think it would be a fair and equitable process. I didn't get any other sense. As far as kids staying there, I would have to look that data up. If I could do that, I present that to you. I think most of the concerns were the budget and the governance.
Yeah. And that, that would be helpful to me. I, I, if, if you don't mind, I would appreciate that so much, because...
Yeah, I'll do my best and try and see if I can find documents to support that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Townsend?
A couple of things on the due, due diligence end about, about the classical one. You said it, just to confirm, it's modeled on, on Mason Classical in Naples, right?
Yes.
I just wanna, just to start right now, just wanna read this. This is from December fourth. The, the ex-tre- treasurer of, of Mason filed a complaint with the, the DOE alleging all sorts of wrongdoing there, including destruction of public records, falsification of documents, illegal conflict of interest between the president and the principal of the board, ignoring the issue, an illegal board meeting, operating without an approved bu, budget, governing board ignoring complaints. So his initial complaint to the DOE was focused on practices of financial mismanagement, including obstructing him from accessing expense reports and verbal abuse, as well as sunshine law by violations. I'm not exactly sure what the status of that complaint is, but it's also worth noting that that's the school that gave Byron and Erica Donalds their start, says something about the way the Florida school is being run today. What also says, and I think it's important to know, what the difference is between this, this classical school and, or one big difference, I see, between this cla, cla, class, classical school and the, and the, what, it's, it's center point, what are we calling this? Center, their, their school is, is?
Bridge.
Bridge, I'm sorry. Bridge, Bridge Prep, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. And I think it's important for the public to know, they have very high-powered lobbying support. Mr. Arza is a well-known, well-financed, as I understand, advocate for his clients' interests. The, the, the other classical school didn't have any of that. Mr. Arza, I believe, has called all of us, I know he called me. And to be fair, it was a completely friendly conver, conversation, there wasn't anything untoward. We, we talked about location, but I think the public should know, there's, there's some pretty strong forces at work behind this, this, this school. Additionally to that, you know, I, I, well, that's it, thanks.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay. My comments are about Bridge Prep. Number one, let me just say, Ms. Mason's always done an extraordinary job of looking at all the documentation and everything, and as you said, it's kinda nice that you're not from here and don't have any political ties, you're strictly, strictly looking at the numbers and the data to try, try to give us the best possible information to guide us in making what is a very important decision for our county, for our children. That being said, I have some questions. The curriculum plan, student performance, all of that, I mean, are these typical errors that you see? Do you feel, I, I'm trying to get a sense of, I, I, I am in support of them opening in a northeast Polk County area, which I have been very clear about since the very first time they came before us, okay? And now there, there's still issues in here, which to me are very important, and I, I kinda wanna know, do you feel, as we move forward with the student performance and assessment, the curriculum plan, most importantly, you know, when you stated that they were the lowest three hundred in the state, I mean, was that for all of those sixteen?
No, just for two of them.
Just for two of them?
I'm sorry, I'm tired of this.
Yeah, two, okay, I, I see it now. Yep, okay, all right. I, I need some more detail, 'cause I'm a little concerned, and I know we're not making that decision today, but as you're gathering more data to, to give back to us, I'd like to know how the other schools performed. We are, and I know some of you are here from, from Bridge Prep, we are in the northeast, good morning, a bedroom community to Disney. Let me just be honest, we are looking for kids to be strong and be able to matriculate through our school system, and be able to go into some of our academies, and move into, to really great jobs in the future. And I, I don't wanna take a chance on this unless we feel a hundred and twenty percent we're gonna be there to do so. I'm, I'm just telling it like it is. So I want some assurance as you move forward in continuing, maybe those negotiations, as Mr. Wilson said, as we get to the contract phase, if the board approves it, I'm only one board member, to make sure that this school is gonna be top-notch. Yes, we need additional schools in northeast, but we need additional high-quality schools with high-quality educators in them to, to complete our mission and vision for our school district. So my, I see all the concerns, I understand about the transportation, I mean, these are huge, and we want you to be able to budget for them, because that's important to us. So having said that, as you do your follow-up, if you can kinda give us some more information, 'cause I wanna make a really good decision, 'cause we need this school, but I'm not gonna vote for it, let me be, unless we know that these items are met, and that my kids are gonna get a high, our kids are gonna get high-quality education, period. I mean, that's where I'm at. And if there are some things that can be tweaked, 'cause it's contract, or it was this, I get that. I'm talking about the substantive, the curriculum, the budget, transportation, all of those major pieces, curriculum and so forth.
I think a lot of the concerns, you address curriculum and educational goals, they can be addressed through contract.
Gentlemen, we won't be entertaining public comments at this time. We may have, we do have a roundtable later after this work session, we may be able to have a, a, a extended conversation at that time.
Ms. Mason's correct, and then, again, I'm gonna look to Wes, but I believe a lot of the questions that you all asked, and that's why I was saying, go to the contracting process.
Yes, I understand, just trying to be sure.
Because those questions, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. And, and I will tell you from past experience, there, the state board tends to lean toward charter schools on these questions. There have been more than one occasion we've gone, when we've gone up on appeal with, with an ironclad case under, under the law and the administrative code, but we've had the state board say, well, you know what, these are, these are good people, and we think you can address that in contract negotiation. So it doesn't make, doesn't, doesn't mean that, that they're right, but it is a political process more than a legal one, and you, you consider those things in your decision-making.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I just, I, I remember this, this second half of my thought. I, I, you know, I, bilingual education is very important to me as a con, concept, it's why I've been pushing for us to create an ac, an academy built around, around it. And I, you know, I have an open mind for, for everything. When I listened to their presentation last time, I was struck by how often they talked about their real estate portfolio. In fact, I'm planning to do a video mashup on it, of, of how many times the phrase "real estate portfolio" came up. At this point, you know, we'll see what, what happens and what gets presented, but this feels much more like a real estate deal than it does like a school. And, you know, I, I, I agree, I agree with Wes, they will almost certainly take this to Tallahassee and get what they want done, because it's a political process. And we'll see how that plays out. But everybody should go back and watch that, 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 that video and see how often real estate was talked about, and see how, how often education was talked, talked about. And I think it draws a real distinction between me, me, Esquela, which is being pushed by a genuine educator who, who cares about the kids in this community. And, you know, I, I appreciated you drawing, drawing, you know, signing that. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, then, Mr. Beston.
I wanna get back to the board, the management of their boards. What you described was people from different counties being a part of those decision-making processes, and having local control is important to their constituents. Mr. Arza mentioned when, and I met with him, that location cannot be just, you know, a reason for dismissal, that's not something Tallahassee would even consider, so we keep talking about where we want it located. I don't know that that matters at this point, but local control on that board, having local people there to help make those decisions is where my concern is. You mentioned they had, you know, several people from different counties serving on multiple boards, and then some of them, they all meet at the same time. How, you know, meeting the needs of my community, Polk County, is where I'm concerned. And, and I do agree that we, we need schools in the northeast. Lakeland, I mean, you know, I'm sure that the four hundred people they reached out to across the county, anybody on that side of the county would've said, yes, we need those, that school there. So that would be my first issue with it, the fact that I don't know that I can even have an issue with location. The second one is local control. How, who is going to be a part of that school board or the process to have local interest? That, that's my comment.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I, I'm gonna agree with Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Miller, I, I think we need some help in that area, and I, much like Mr. Townsend, and I'm sure the other board members, I also met with Mr. Arza, and we had a very friendly conversation, and, and one of the things that we discussed was locating that school in the northeast part of the county. So if, if we can work that out, I mean, if they're willing to do that, then I'm, you know, I'm in favor of, of, of working with them to get that done. I, I think to Ms. Miller's concerns, if, if they wanna do something in Lakeland, well, we may not be able to stop it, we can certainly delay it for a while, which may not be something they want, that they want to do. But in addition to that, Mr. Arza and I had the conversation about how students are selected, a lottery process specifically, and we talked about ensuring that once students were there, they, they stayed there. And so that's why I'm interested in that second piece. So just, just wanna be sure that I'm open to the public about the conversations I've had with these folks and what my thoughts are in building a school there.
Again, I'd like to reiterate, I didn't get any sense from reading the application nor the interview that they were being very selective in the student population. I think they would have a fair and equitable process.
What are they?
Mr. Townsend?
Back to Mason, and I, I know, you know, it's a pretty, but their racial makeup is seventy percent white, five percent black, twenty percent Hispanic. That's the school in Naples, that they're replicating here. I'm not sure we need another school that replicates that demographic makeup, so that's the point tonight.
Well, I'm looking for an email from our teacher of the year that was sent to all of us. I can't seem to locate it, who I believe is in that area that we need a new school. Y'all remember reading that? And it was signed by...
Several teachers from that area.
Oh, was that?
Oh, my. It was signed by...
What was that, was that one of them?
Community leaders, it was signed by, and somehow I can't put my email up, imagine that. But, you know, that spoke volumes to me. When our Teacher of the Year felt a need to reach out to the board, and it was a very well-written letter about the job that we already do in that area and how good we are at it. Just wanted to bring that up.
Ms. Davis?
I think it kind of goes back to what Ms. Cunningham said earlier. Whatever we decide to do, we need to make sure that it's of high quality. And that's why I wanted to know, Ms. Vicki, about the performance of the other schools that they have in that area. And then going back and making sure that if we do, we are able to work with Bridge Prep, that we do basically say we need that school in the east area of Polk County because I think everyone knows that that is a concern. But again, it has to be quality. And then making sure to be our representation on the board. So, I think those are issues that can be dealt with and resolved.
May I just make sure I understand, I'm providing data as far as their history of school grades, looking at financial history and student enrollment. Is that what you were asking for, Mr. Wilson, was student enrollment, looking if there was any data to support if students are being in that?
Yeah.
Those are the three things?
Yeah, yes, for me.
I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Wilson?
So, Ms. Warren, thank you for bringing up that email. I read that as well, and let me be clear about this. I don't doubt the quality of instruction that our teachers in the northeast part of the county are providing, they're amazing teachers, they're doing amazing things. But I also saw in that email a request for help, that we need more schools and we need more resources in that area. That's our challenge, we don't have those resources. And whether we like it or not, the state provides those resources through charter schools. And we have, first and foremost, and we have responsibility to the children in that area, and if we're not appropriately serving the children in that area because we don't have those resources and we have to get them through another avenue, then we're stuck, I think.
Yes, I hear you and I appreciate your comment. I found the letter. Paragraph two, "The perception of this article gives the board's comments during the school board meeting. The board is welcoming charter schools in our area to resolve our current needs. This leaves an unsettling feeling with the Polk County school staff for following reasons. Charter schools, many for profits, play by a different set of rules than our traditional public schools. Even the Polk County school website gives the impression that charter schools are more innovative option for students." I think what they're asking is help from us to do their job. And it goes on, I could read the whole thing, but it's... It is what it is.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Bridges?
I just have a suggestion because I've been listening to you all talk about your concern about the school actually being located in the east portion of the county. I know we've had a lot of verbal discussions about that and Mr. Arza has talked back and forth about that in May that committee. We do have two weeks between now and the time that goes to the board. We could ask them, we certainly can't mandate that they do it, but we could ask them to write a letter of commitment saying that they intend to locate the school in that portion of the county. And that would then be a document that if they choose to do that, you can have in your possession and writing prior to the board vote, if that would be helpful and useful.
Is that something you would like?
Yes, for me, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. That would be very helpful, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that suggestion. I would like to see that, please.
Then I'll work with Candy and we'll do a written request to them, requesting that letter, and then they can choose to respond if they can finish.
Thank you for that. Thank you all so much, I appreciate it. The next item that is going to come before you is going to be Mr. Perone will bring the recent budget updates. Want a break? Can we take a 10-minute break? Be back at 10:10, is that okay? Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume and we're going to actually start back with our budget updates.
So, the last time we met, we had the governor and the House budget. And then Senate budget came in while we're meeting, but it was not broken out by line item like we did. We didn't get that till last week. Jason has updated that we have all three now. I will ask and to think about, this is quite a busy spreadsheet, but we kept everything on there. After talking with Wendy, I think at some point, the governor's budget becomes, I don't want to say obsolete, but it's not really a part of it. We might be able to take that column out of it just to make this less busy. And one of the main reasons, his FTE number is so different, vastly different from what we proposed to the state and what the House and Senate have. So, we can talk about that at the end, but Jason's going to go through the numbers because the Senate obviously is a much nicer number. We'd like to have that one, but we'll see what happens.
It is a confusing spreadsheet with a lot of information. So, I highlighted the columns, the House budget in red and the Senate budget in green. House, the red, means stock, and the green means go. Those indicate my preference if we had preference. And one of the unusual, and I kind of mentioned it last time about the, your sheet in front of you, I hit the columns up here for the presentation purposes. Your sheet in front of you still has the governor's budget. If you notice the first line, the first two lines which has FTE, the governor's budget has about 900 less students. So, it skews his budget a little bit. His budget came out so early that I believe that they did not have the updated DOE projections. However, it wouldn't change his base student allocation, it really wouldn't change our discretionary dollars. It would just pay for those growth in students. So, I'm going to quickly go over this sheet because I've summarized this sheet on the second sheet of your presentation, and that's what will spend the majority of our time. So, looking at the House budget in the red column, you can see the difference, the column net, which is the difference between our current budget. They have proposed a $38.34 increase in the base student allocation. Their budget and the Senate budget decreases our DCD slightly. We are going from a .9708 to a .9700, it's just a slight decrease. But that would, under the House budget, would leave us a $33.83 increase in the base student allocation. Just to highlight a few of the categoricals, as we had heard, they had taken out that one-time funding allocation that we had received last year. So, you can see the negative $7.7 million here. Interestingly, their budget had a decrease in safe school allocation and a slight increase in mental health. Both the governor and the Senate had a considerable increase in those two categoricals. If you run through the rest of the categoricals, they're pretty much similar through all governor, Senate and House. If we just kind of go down to the bottom, the increase in the House budget, the House budget gives Polk County an overall increase of $18.7 million. On the next sheet, I'm going to kind of break that down into what's discretionary or not. But it's 18.7. At the very bottom, that shows a 1.18% increase in per FTE funding. So, it's just a very slight increase. Now, quickly to go over the Senate budget. If you want to start at the base student allocation, their increase in the base student allocation is nearly $150 statewide, $149.40. After you apply our DCD, it would give us an increase of $141.56 in the base student allocation, which would be the largest increase in the base student allocation in a few years, yeah, quite a few years. Going down, looking at some of their categoricals I want to highlight. They did leave in the funding compression allocation, they dropped it by 1.8. It was a little bit over seven, but we do have that funding compression allocation, which is discretionary dollars. Then they added a new category called turnaround supplemental services allocation. Mr. Perone and I called Wendy Dodge yesterday to ask her what that was for, and she stated that it looked like it was for community schools such as our Crystal Aid and some other turnaround services. I don't have any more details at this point on what that, other than that, on what that $5 million would mean to us, but it is listed as like a categorical. They significantly increased our safe schools and mental health by the tune of about $3 million. And let me say that all the governor, the House and the Senate all transferred the best and brightest into the FEFP. Now, there's different amounts for each of them. They all have different plans on how they, that program would work. And, you know, that'll be worked out over the next few weeks as they hammer out the final plans. So, if we just kind of scroll to the bottom and just get through this spreadsheet, the Senate plan would give the school district an extra $44.3 million on an FTE, per FTE, that is 4.55% increase per student, which is significant. Any questions on this before I move to the second page?
Just on the compression funding, again, that's never going to be a thing that we can, can't really rely on anything to be recurring, but that's not, that's a thing we definitely can't rely on to be recurring.
Starjel has a bill right now that, sorry, Starjel has a bill right now that would make it reoccurring.
So, yeah, because it can be, there is a compression. This is another one. If they rolled it into the compression, which will become every year, then it would be recurring and then we can count it. But as long as they have them separate like that, I wouldn't be confident that we'll be able to keep it. So, hopefully we'll see it move into the other formula.
And I guess the quick one I was going to make on that is thinking of it until it becomes a recurring, thinking of it as a one-time, it might be helpful in paying down the insurance debt or stuff like that, is that the kind of thing that we might be wise to use that for? Anyway, just moving ahead.
The line above it is compression adjustment, we get 28 million, almost 29, right here. That is, if they roll it into that and it becomes, you know, that would be recurring, that would be our suggestion, hopefully that's what Senator Starjel is trying to do, I hope.
Okay, if you'll flip to your second page, this is a summarized version of this ugly spreadsheet here. Now, last time we looked at, we not only looked at this spreadsheet, but we also looked at kind of a bare-bones type of budget scenario and I don't want to say a pie-in-the-sky budget scenario, but we listed all the new requests, and we won't really go into that today. I just wanted to give this update. We've already talked about the governor's plan. When we reduced, when we deducted the new categorical funding, we reduced the growth, the dollars due to the new amount of students. The governor's plan left us about $12 in new discretionary spending per student. Now, if we look at the House plan, again, that 18.7 million top line ties out to the bottom figure on that previous spreadsheet. That's the total amount of new dollars that they're projecting that we're getting. So, we pull out, again, the best and brightest because it's really just a pass-through. That means our total new FEFP based on the House plan would be about $9.2 million. If you add all of their categoricals, their increase in categoricals, about 1.3 million. So, if we pull that out of the new FEFP, that leaves us with about $7.9 million in new non-categorical funding. However, 7.8 of that 7.9 is just due to the new number of students. The difference in the House plan would leave us with about $125,000 in new pure discretionary spending. You divide that by the number of students, it leaves us with about $1.18 per student in new discretionary funding. Now, let's go over to the green column, the Senate column. There's the 44.3 million that we saw on the previous sheet. Their best and brightest is 8.2, if we pull that out, that leaves us with about $36.1 million in new FEFP revenue. If we pull out their new categorical funding, that would leave us with about $26.8 million in new non-categorical funding. We remove the revenue that's just due to the new students, that leaves us with about $19 million in just pure discretionary spending. You divide that by the 105,000 students we're projecting next year, that leaves us with about $180 per student in discretionary spending. That's the difference between the three plans that have been proposed.
Big difference.
Big difference. It'll probably land somewhere in between.
Yeah, what we talked to Wendy about yesterday, the debate, some of those increases for some of the things that each body of government wants. And so, yeah, it most likely will be something in between.
Typically, I'll just remind this, three years ago, it was two, one of the plans, I believe it was the governor, was $200 increase, the House was $100, the Senate was 100. At the end of the day, it was less than 100.
Right.
Wasn't in the middle.
That would be very strange, hopefully that does not happen again, but...
Well, we're between $1.18 and $180, so I'm saying somewhere in between, right?
That's safe, that's a safe projection.
Right, right, that's safe assumption, somewhere between those two.
I also did include just a little bit of extra information at the bottom. When we looked at the couple of different scenarios I talked about, and this is based on kind of the new level of service, that we don't add new services, new positions, that sort of thing. The amount of dollars that we needed to get to a 3% fund balance or a 5% fund balance. With the governor's plan, we needed, if you want to say cut, we needed an additional $11.5 million to get to 3%, 27.2 to get to 5%. I did the same thing for the House budget. And then the Senate budget, it is a significant amount of money. If we did nothing with the budget that we had last year, we would meet that 3% without, in fact, we'd have $7.5 million in addition. So, that kind of shows the bottom-line impact of really what we're going to talk about over the next few weeks. It's a very quick presentation and take questions. It's a very quick presentation, and take questions.
Wendy, have you any ideas to why there's such a big difference between the house and the senate budget? Any, any insight on that? Because I've never seen it like that before.
I didn't ask her why, I just said, what, what are they going to fight over, and it was just kind of some of the, you know, the voucher plan, and the compression, and the, you know, you give me this, I'll take that, kind of thing, so, I don't know, she did not mention, we didn't ask her, so, I could ask her that.
I just was curious.
Yeah, she, well, she did make the state, she did make the statement, is that it's not so much monetary, it's, it's all the political pieces that, that lie within, lie within those.
Right.
And I don't want to give my opinion or speculate on the law.
You can do it, maybe.
I'll do it off, off record.
You think there's an off record? Ed, do shut that off.
Any other questions? Which ones?
I just went to make the comment, looking at what our legislative priorities were in the senate budget, there is three of the things on our five items on our legislative platform, but the senate budget not only did, but went above and beyond, so I think it's important that as we're meeting with legislators and talking to our senators, that we start with a thank you, because I, I liked to think that they're listening, they didn't just come up with these numbers out of nowhere. Specifically for Florida School Board Association, it was, we won a hundred and forty dollars in the BSA, the senate is, or, sorry, a hundred and forty-nine dollars, the senate's a hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents, so it's hard for me to say they came up with a hundred and forty-nine dollars all by themselves, when the numbers are that close, so I think just, for anyone in the community, if you see your senator, say thank you for, for supporting education, because I think that's important.
Ms. Miller?
Do you, the vouchers most likely will happen, the governor said he will clear that list of, the ones that are at least waiting for the disability and/or low income vouchers. Do we, because we talked about the categorical things that may change when they, when the negotiations are currently happening, do we know what that impact would be, because that would be the most significant, I would think.
I'll say it's going to be a tough one to do.
Okay.
It will be tough, we'll get, take us to that, I guess.
Well, no, I didn't know if you had an opinion.
No.
You can have opinions, it's okay. Like, I don't know if you have.
No, we know it's going to cost money, we just can't.
Because that, I think that would be a significant.
My opinion is, or my guess is, it's going to be very similar to the way the McCay works, in that we probably won't know the impact until the middle of the year.
When we get those vouchers, okay.
Yes, I, that's my, I think we're not going to know until, and then, then it just goes unhistorical, like we used McCays, we didn't know, and that grows and grows, and it kind of stops.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
I mean, two things related to that, one, I think the usage of the scholarships is going down in Polk, correct? Like, like in, or?
The McCay, we reached a P two years ago of about eight, and I believe this past year went a little down to about seven, so we, we have seen, hopefully, hopefully we've seen the P.
I'm not sure how Gardner plays into that, but, like, that kind of confused me sometimes. But, but, second, secondly to that, we, we need to get some sort of statement from the state, or whatever, whatever this goes through, as to what actually, scholarship X is paid on X day to go to X little, little school, school, that child leaves that school thirty, you know, three months later, where's that money go? I mean, does, is that money doled out all at once? What's, what's the, like, you know, where, where do the vouchers play out over, and I would, I would just like to know what the schedule of that is for an individual.
Vouchers and McCays.
Any and all, whatever comes, I mean, this can, this can be, once, once we know what the law is, I mean, I, just a thing I, I want to know, yeah, mechanism part.
The McCay added question, and McCay, they used to give it out all at once, till they learned that people would cash checks and send students back, so that is different, I don't know how the vouchers work, McCays come out, you know, in increments, but we McCay from school to school, we, we McCay from public to public, do we break down the McCays that are going to private compared to McCays that are going within our system?
I can get that information.
Because I think that would be a good look at the projection of how many are actually leaving our system compared to McCain from one public school into another public traditional school.
Dr. Stein, yes.
Students that are McCain from public to private are required to be enrolled under a different school MSID number, thirty-five eighteen, because they're the ones going to private school under that voucher. So, whatever number of students we have enrolled under that school number would be the private school kids. Any that are going public to public would be based on whatever transfer code we use internally for students.
But there's the dollars, you don't, the dollars are going, you will see that how many, actually dollars are leaving the system compared to how many are staying and just switching.
Yes.
Right, but the dollars would be tracked by the kids in thirty-five eighteen.
Okay.
Ms. Reynolds?
I had a question, and this may be a Dr. Stein question as well, Ms. Courtney and I were meeting with a legislator while we were in Tallahassee last week, and we were meeting with several other districts, and the mental health allocation came up, that that money, I think if they said ninety percent of it cannot be spent on our employees, that they're, that only ten percent can be spent on our employees, the rest has to be contract groups, do you have any?
My understanding is that it, it has to be spent on services to students, not necessarily the type of personnel you use to do that.
Okay.
So, we can use our own employees, as long as they're employees that are used for the purpose of providing mental health.
Okay, good to know. They asked us who we contracted with, and both of us were like, we, we just hired new employees, so.
I think that's because a lot of the districts chose to do contracted mental health services, instead, we decided to employ our own.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, but are you talking about in Senator Simpson's?
Yes.
Okay, because we had like five districts in there, I mean, that's how they saw us, and, and it was a very crowded, crowded room, but Senator Simpson seemed to question that whole process, just as an FYI, and he seemed like a pretty sharp gentleman, so if he was questioning it, you know.
I just, neither one of us.
Right.
Had any idea that that, that's something, I feel like, we would have been made aware of if that was an issue, and we'd be here lobbying for that to change, but, so.
Yeah, no, it was pretty clear in the original about the number of percent, that, that it had to go towards mental health services. You couldn't go and spend it on.
Okay, but it can be hiding, hiring mental health counselors as Polk County School Board employees, that was our question.
Mr. Townsend?
How many, it's like a hundred and twenty current schools that take vouchers, that have, like, do we have a, a number for that in, in Polk? I think the, the number, the number I've heard is a hundred and twenty.
The number of schools in Polk?
Yeah, private, private schools, not.
We have a hundred and twenty private schools, but I, I know, just because I have a McCay child, and I ask a lot of questions, I think we work with about fifty on McCay.
I think it's more about forty, but that's actually the list you asked for earlier on the private schools that we consult with, that get IDA funds.
Okay.
It'd be the same number, so that list I'm getting for you from earlier would be the answer.
But, but that, would, would, but, but, but that cover the low income one as well? If those aren't, I mean, who, it, it would be, it would be nice to know, if we could know how many schools actually.
No, I take that answer back, that wasn't right what I just said.
It's, it's, it, it would be nice to know this, so, I, I accept it as complicated, if we could figure out some primers on who's what and all that, I'd like to know how many we have.
Any other questions?
It's Courtney that we consult with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Should we say something about, you know, some, how do you make the phone calls, just? Yeah, I, I just have one more comment, because we have to organize the troops here. It does matter that our representatives here from us, in phone calls, emails, personal letters, they mention it every office we visited, and, you know, I'm trying to stick with exactly what our legislative platform was, because you only have like a nanosecond to be in there, and I, we think we need a united front on that, but I would love for the ledger to make a call on that as well, you know, asking for Polk Countyans to support us in, in the positive things that we do, and we can't do it with one of those budgets up there. Yes, Ms. Miller?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, I think, and we've talked about this in the past, and I, I, you know, I think we've had some emails about it, I really think we need to utilize our PR department to help tell our story, not of just the good things that are happening, but how the budget affects us. Like, Mr. Wilson's speaking, I speak at Rotary next month, like, if I had something that told our story, and, you know, simple terms, and you have twenty minutes to share with someone, or fifteen minutes to share with someone, and we could share it on social media that kind of tells, this is where we are, this is how our funding works, and it's hard, I mean, the budgets, one of our delegation who I admire, you know, we joke about how it looks like Chinese, you know, he doesn't understand anything, he's, you know, to read that is very difficult, and I get it, if you don't read these numbers every day, so we need to, if we had something that we could share, I think the, if the public knew, that's what we always say, if the public knew the lack of accountability with voucher, if the public knew what we were doing with certain, I think we would see a massive support. I think they just don't understand how it's working.
Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Reynolds?
Yeah, I agree with you, a hundred and thirty percent, something that was very useful to me when I went a few months ago, Mr. Pitts and I went and addressed a group of individuals, he's got this PowerPoint, and I know it has to be a little bit updated, but it is phenomenal, and it is maybe a ten or fifteen minute quick and easy to show with graphs and stuff, and I use that with everybody that I speak with, so just FYI, that might be helpful to you, I don't know. Is there a place to start?
Ms. Reynolds?
And I know I mentioned this at our last school board meeting, but I was in Tallahassee with Katie from the Winter Haven Chamber two or three weeks ago, and she made a point at the end of last session to come and say, I need to know your information, I want to be able to tell your story, the chamber doesn't survive if the education in our area doesn't survive, so how can we help you? She was able to sit down with Wendy for an hour, hour and a half, with the president of the Lakeland Chamber as well, and having her in offices with me, for her to say, you don't understand, we need this, like, my, my businesses aren't going to survive if we don't have, that's the first thing they ask us, is what's the education like here? And you could just tell on representative's faces, and senator's faces, how impactful it was to hear it from an economic development business standpoint, not just, we're educators and we want more money to do our jobs, so I would highly encourage anyone who has an interest in education from any point of view to go, because those are actually the voices that tend to be more powerful.
I just have one more little tidbit on that, because, you know, it would have been really nice to have something for even our representatives, because they don't really understand what they're voting on, I hate to be negative, but if we could have had something like what the PowerPoint, you know, they're willing to learn, and they're willing to help us, and they're, you know, I feel like, I got that sense, but even like the transportation issue with the twenty-five versus thirty-seven, people understand that, you know, and I would love the PowerPoint as well.
I would say that.
Thank you.
So I'll tell you that we have done, how many now, guys? Four, we're doing four this week?
Four, Thursday.
Three or four. So we have been out with groups, communicating and doing the PowerPoint about budget and educating them on that, so we'll send you the PowerPoint out there, I think we have one more this week that we have.
It may be helpful to, you know, to sit together individually and go through it, so that you know what to say on the slides, because they're, they're pretty self-explanatory, but once you see them and how we talk through it, I think it'll be real helpful, and we show the mileage rates, because of the fact that they're cutting the, rolling this back, that, that's a real powerful slide to show how many millions over the years we've lost.
Ms. Reynolds?
That also would be, I know we, Dr. Aix did a video recently on, and we're rolling out a series, that would be a great PowerPoint to use in a video, that we could put on the website and get out to the masses, I know Jason would love to be the star of his own movie, so.
Sure, he's volunteered, he's already volunteered, too.
That smile says yes, but, so, just a.
I know this is evolved, but what I was really talking about is, when, when I go to different meetings of clubs and caucuses and stuff, they always ask about talking points, and so when we ask for folks to call or email our representatives, if we could all have the same talking points, that's what I was kind of asking for, not, but I do want the PowerPoint, but, you know, something that the average neighbor in my neighborhood could utilize.
Ms. Reynolds?
Right, we, I know the communications department created for the different leadership programs of our legislative platform in a nice, pretty document, it has all of our information on it, all of the representatives and senators' information on it to who to call, but it also has those bullet points of what's on our platform, if we could maybe each get a little stack of those, so that if we run into somebody, or if we get asked to speak at Rotary or something like that, we can have some with us, that we don't have to call you every time and say, hey, can I get ten more? It would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that concludes our session, session, section that we have, I will now turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, so we, we do have a couple of items on the agenda for our school board works session portion of this meeting, we also have a couple of items left over from the prior work session, and those were two resolutions that Mr. Townsend brought forward that we didn't have a chance to fully explore, we need to talk about those today. Immediately following the work session, we're going to have a roundtable, and, and before we start that roundtable, I'll pull the board members, see if you want to take a break, or just want to move forward, we'll see how that goes. On, on the roundtable agenda, we have a couple of items, and then I've also indicated to Ms. Cappizello that I would allow her an opportunity to address us as part of the roundtable, as well as the representatives from Bridgeport, so, folks, when we, when we get to that part of the agenda, we'll, we'll let you know, and you're welcome to come up and, and share your thoughts and concerns with us. So, the first order of business on the board part of this agenda is master board training, and I think the issue here is, we need to identify, number one, what dates that we would like to continue the training, and in addition to that, which, which parts of the training we want to do, is that correct? Does Wardner, no?
The date that they're asking is, is already set.
Okay.
The agenda is already set.
So we have an agenda, and we need to, to agree to the date, or are they asking us set a date?
They need a, they need a date.
Okay, so we just need a date?
Do they have recommendations? Did they say when, like, is there a?
They're open to our schedule.
I have a question about those, just as a new Wardner, what comes from that? When we, we, we spent money on the training, and we had the meeting, at the end, is there an overview of what we did, or is it just good conversation? Because I think we all could have that great conversation in a room without the five thousand dollar oversight, you know what I mean? Like, I don't, unless we're getting something from that, other than a facilitator.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that we get is, at the end of the participation, we get a master board training plaque that validates that we have worked together, the board, and that we have hopefully enhanced our knowledge in relation to the governance speed and other items that's covered throughout the, the training, and then at the, the School Board Association conference, I don't remember which one of those conferences, but if, if the board members are there, we all are able to be presented with that plaque, if I remember correctly, at the, at the conference, to show that we have seriously engaged in ultimately that we've worked towards becoming more knowledgeable in relation to the responsibilities that we have before us as a board.
And, Ms. Miller, to answer a question, in addition to that, of course, we, it's just paying for the services of professionals who have been through it many times, and know what the pitfalls are of, you know, boards working together. I know the last one we went to, we were in the same room with another, with another county, and they were struggling with, through some issues, we saw that, it was very clear, and, so they were working with them specifically to address some of those issues, so I think that's part of it as well. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just was going to say, I think the facilitators are a really important piece of it, and not only offer, you know, facilitating conversation, but also if we're talking about doing something, being able to say, okay, this is, they've tried this in three other counties, and this is how, just having that institutional knowledge of, this really got screwed up in three other counties, so this is what you need to watch out for if you do it this way, but I think that's also a really important piece of it. Um, but I think that's also a really important piece of it, is kind of having all of that.
Is there a summary? Cause I can't remember much of what we talked, I mean, is there a summary at the end of this is what we've gone through, this is what we've discovered, this is what you're gonna, you know, I'm just curious, I don't, I was trying to find.
We can reach out to them and see if, if they could provide a summary to us.
Cause we could decide in the conversation, we're going to do these things, but if there's no follow-up, I don't know that we're going to do any of those things. I just want to, you know, and most trainings, I was looking for something more than just facilitate a conversation.
Ms. Wardington, would you mind reaching out and see if they have a summary of our last one, please? Yes, sir.
I mean, what we got from the la, the last one was good, good discussion, it's about some, some, some issues. Additionally, we got some different protocols from different boards. I agree, it would be nice to have, you know, them play some sort of adjudication role on, on what we think our, our, our pop, 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 policies ought to be, you know, like saying if some, something is consistent with leading practice or not, you know, but I'm not sure they're in a position to do that, given that we're all elected officials. I think you get out of it, it's, you know, I, I know what I, what I want to get, get out of, out of it. I wa, I want to establish the ground rules on which we can communicate in, like, you know, how, how, how do issues like the audit that just came out, yes, uh, yesterday affect how we re, we interact with, 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 with leadership and staff? I mean, there, there are a lot of i- issues in that audit that I would like to be able to talk to staff directly about, so I can understand them. The current way we do things, I think we're going to talk about this a bit in the, in the round, round, round table inhibits that communication. And working through that issue is something I plan to do at the, at, at the ma, a master board, and it's, and it's a good chance to have all of us in one place, so we can, you know, confront each other. And I don't mean confront each other like yell at each other, I mean like clarify where we're coming from and, and what's acceptable to us individually, what isn't. I think it's a pretty good forum for that, hopefully, um, you know, it, it, ho, hopefully will create some kind of deliverable out of the end of it that, that is more, um, I really don't care about a plaque, I, I don't care about being master board certified, but I would like to set a standard for how this board operates for the, the public and, and, and go, go from there.
And we do, we did have, we do have a, an agenda item for the roundtable that directly came from that, so.
Okay, maybe that, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Wardington?
Yeah, I'm just a goal-oriented person, so I kind of agree with Ms. Miller, I, I'd like to see what our goal, like, and did we accomplish that goal and how we went about, you know, is it communication? Is it, uh, policy? Is it procedure? Is it that kind of thing?
Okay.
May I read something?
Yes, ma'am.
The master board training governance team training for the school board and superintendent is designed to strengthen the leadership team's ability to work effectively, efficiently, and collectively as a governance body, while maintaining a focus on student achievement and factors contributing to the, to the success of schools. Opportunities are provided for the team to discuss and improve on his those important interpersonal issues which are essential to team functioning, and there's some other stuff. But that's the first part of the description of what master board training is.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fields. Do, so I think the question before us is what date, right? We need to set a date, so, um, I'm going to need your help as board to help me decide what.
Well, I guess, is, is this something we need to do next month, or, or can we do it in July, stay on time?
Right.
What's the, what's the, what's the timing?
What's the urgency of it?
Excuse me, graduations are starting.
Right.
Next month.
No, I, I know, that's why, so, so, I mean, is it, is it your, your preference to go before that? Or would you rather everything get done and let, I mean, like, what's the, cause, cause, cause you're going to be in, in there with us, right? That's a big, big part, part of it, right?
Ms. Fields, you, you've been through this before, what, what do you recommend? Should we, and, and Ms. Cunningham, you've been through it, should we push it, can we push it back to July? Is that okay?
For June?
I think it needs to be after graduation.
Right.
Okay.
Every, every time in the summer, early, early fall, I don't know, I don't know what Susan's conversation was with them, um, their availability.
Ms. Reynolds?
I was just going to suggest, could we maybe have Susan and Jackie get together and propose, like, five dates? That they can say which one of these is best for everybody, rather than having 365 days to look at.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's helpful to know before grad, graduation or after, so that's fine.
Right.
I'm gone the first two weeks of June, or first 10 days of June, so just like.
Cause Wardington, did you have some thoughts you'd like to share with us related to that or no? Okay, so, you, Madam Superintendent, would you mind getting together, Ms. Wardington?
Yes, we'll get together.
All right, thank you. And then finally, the last item, it's really, not, not the last item, the next item really, I think, is just informational about upcoming board meetings, I wanted to make sure we had this on the agenda, so everyone was aware of the proposed meeting dates in case there were any concerns or challenges. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chair, there's going to be a correction in April.
Okay.
I think, um, they just kind of flipped that, Joan just brought it to my attention, so they want to flip it. Well, they, I think they had the work session last, that she was trying to look at the calendars with graduations for the 2020 year. So that's just going to be changed.
And, um, what, what is changing? I'm sorry.
I think you have the work session.
They're just going to flip.
Oh, they're flipping, okay.
And the rationale for that is for what reason now, please?
We had, she just, I think she was looking at the graduations, trying to get it, but we got enough time in between there to flip it and have that board meeting on the 28th, so the graduations act from 2020 start the 29th of April.
So is that going to be changed and then sent back out?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions or comments about proposed board meeting dates? Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Well, nothing really about the dates, uh, more about the times, again, the times for our work sessions and stuff that is just not conducive to our stakeholders to make any kind of contribution, so I'm just going to put that out there. The 12:30 work sessions, the nine in the morning, uh, work sessions for folks, and I know we, um, maybe even start our actual board meetings a little bit later than five, you know, people teach till 4:15 in middle schools in Davenport, and they can't get here for even a board meeting to start at 5 o'clock. So I'm just putting that out there for future reference.
And it puts strain on board, board, board members as well, who are, you know, are members of the community and have, you know, prof, professional jobs, the more, the more meetings we could have af, after 5, the happier I would be, so. I don't know, I've, I've been saying that for a while, but, yeah, that's.
So, I'm, I'm thinking like 5:30, 6 o'clock, what?
Six.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love that, I would, I would love, I would love to have si, 6 o'clock work, work sessions.
And then my, my other concern is that sometimes we have so much business that it, didn't we used to meet twice a month? Boards, board meetings twice a month?
Well, we, we did be, we did have board meetings twice a month, but, but we, we still have work sessions twice a month. The idea was that it has, continue to have the work sessions, but we felt like we really only need to have a board meeting where we're taking official votes once a month, and I'll let Ms. Fields, Ms. Cunningham weigh in if you'd like to on that matter.
I think there was a lot of discussion that was had about it, and it believed that one board meeting per month is sufficient to cover all the islands that were needed, and, but we wanted to make sure that we still had work session every, every other week, to make sure that we didn't overburden the staff.
And one of the other things was because of the amount of staff that has to stay for every board meeting, um, on top of their da, daily duties, um, it just seemed like a lot, and we polled, if I remember correctly, we polled other districts to find out, how does everybody else handle it? And everybody, I mean, a ma, super majority have one board meeting a month, but then has this extra time to sit and discuss, certainly in preparation for, and some, you know, two hours, three hours, it just depends, like today we're standing for roundtable, so it'll be like almost a whole day. But typically, once a month is sufficient for actual.
I'm more concerned with the start time and, and work session, you know, times and stuff like that, not really the number of meetings, or not, official meetings.
Okay, all right. Who's had a question?
Yes, ma'am, please.
On, the only thing that I've seen come up with the one board meeting a month, can we meet more often on discipline hearings if we have to? Because they drag those out from, and sometimes that can be an issue that they can't, so can you, if we have a work session, could you have a discipline hearing with a work session if needed? Or do you have to have a board meeting, board meeting to do that?
Mr. Bridges, I think.
It has to be, it has to be a meeting of the school board, cause you're taking official action. But it's, it's interesting, because it's, it's generally closed by law unless the parent wants it open when you're having hearings.
Having that conversation with our staff about how the timeframe of staff, the issue, it was mentioned that it's different, because now you have one board meeting, so things are, you have to, it delays some of the action, um, until that next meeting.
Yeah, and, and there could be circumstances where that would, where that would be important. I think it is not unusual for take, for explosion cases to take that long to work their way through the system anyway. So it'd be, be a real question, what would be the functional impact? And that would be a Brett Ludley question.
And I, and I guess my question, Ms. Miller, is what, what does that stem from? Are you getting the sense it's a, it's a challenge for staff?
I think that's a, I think we need to ask Mr. Butler the question, because that's the conversation I was having with his staff and him about timeframe, and he said it does get tight, I'm not going to speak for him, but at the time, it does get tight sometimes with the length of our board meeting to board meeting.
Same, same, same issue we had today with DSE people, you know.
But if that can be discussed, you know, at a work session, or if there's a time where it is, you know, that we can add it, it doesn't have to be a meeting, like, it could be a meeting of us, but not a general board meeting.
Ms. Cunningham?
I was just going to add that we're here on this off-board meeting day to conduct, you know, roundtable and our regular work session, if need be, and there was a particular case or two that needed immediate, I mean, we could recess here, go into that, right, scenario, right? As long as it's a duly called meeting.
Yeah, we, we, we just have to notice it for that purpose.
And we have done that before, yes, ma'am.
And that goes back to what Mr. Townsend was saying, we, if we have an emergency, we certainly can schedule them for.
Yeah, that's a, that's a topic that is worth discussing.
It is.
Uh, I think that, you know, the, the law is designed to allow you flexibility. Uh, we, we get locked into schedules because it's difficult to set things when everybody can be there and whatnot, but the law is designed to allow you the flexibility of calling special meetings or, or emergency meetings as you need to. And it says you have to have at least one, but you can, you can, you can call those. Uh, and if, if that happens, then there, there are provisions in the, in the APA for how those have to be.
We're, we're talking about discipline.
Right, but, but you can call a special meeting at the school board to do that, sure.
And Madam Superintendent, I think you had some comments you wanted to make.
No, I was just going to say, we use, and that's why I was going to, we have called them before when there was a special one, but they do take time to go through the process, the due process for them, that's why, I don't think.
You still have to notice them and prepare the agenda.
Why don't we set a regular discipline hearing for every off-work session, and that we just don't have it if there's not one ready for it? I mean, like, what's, what's wrong with just, with just having it on that, that rhythm? We just do it.
On the today day?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, just, just, just ha, have it as a standing meeting, be, because we routinely don't have, there are days we don't have discipline, that we, we just don't have the hearing, I don't see why we couldn't do that for on the off days too, and then that gives, gives two cracks at it.
Can we reach out to Mr. Butler and see if this is, let's see what he says, and if this is something that, that he would prefer or not?
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to jump back to Ms. Cunningham's, uh, concern about staff. When we have work sessions and, uh, you know, and we listen to our staff make their great presentations, is that what you were talking about, the work sessions or the actual meetings?
The actual board meetings at night.
And, and how many staff members is that involved, do you know? Just curious.
Looking out in the audience, 30, 40, and depending? I mean, I, I'm not counting those that are coming, I'm not counting those that are coming to be announced as a new administrator, but just the cabinet and et cetera, 30, 40, maybe, I don't know. I was saying to have two meetings, to have two regularly scheduled board meetings, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I'm still not pushing that.
I know, I know, I understand.
I'm just trying to understand real quick, because as, as, as everybody drives here to our meetings, they drive by schools that there's still teachers in the parking lot and administrators and.
Sure.
You know, that's an expectation, is what I'm saying.
We're also just in a highly eventful period of time for education, there's a lot of stuff to talk about. And, you know, I mean, I, I, and I, I don't want to keep harping on this, but I guess I'm going to. If I had the ability to talk, to have conversations with staff, so, so that I could understand issues better individually, wouldn't have to have as many work, work sessions in theory, you know, I mean, it's, there's a, that, that weird hangup that we have here is, I mean, if we can't get, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about this audit, like, there's a bunch of stuff in there, staff-related, and all of our names are on it, every single, it starts with my name first, you know, we're, we're, we're stacked. So, state thinks we have a role, you know, and, uh, stuff I got to talk, talk about, who do I talk to about that? And we have to come up with, with a way to, to make that work, and we can, we can come back to, to that at the round, round, round table. But if, but if, but if I can't call Ted Edred to ask about what's going on in, in HR, hey, can you tell me about this, this, and this? If I can't call Jake Mason to ask blah, 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 if I can't call Doc Aggrastain, Anki directly, you know, and, and with them being free to explain things to me, uh, the only alternative is to pin them down on a work session and interrogate them the way I do, you know, like, which I'd, I'd rather just talk off, off to people. So, anyway, that's my, my two cents here.
Well, and, and certainly that's a valid concern, and we, we do need to find a solution. I'm hoping that the superintendent's new proposed system will, will help solve at least some of that. Part of the challenge we have is there's seven of us, and if there's seven people calling board members, I mean, it's calling staff routinely, it can, it can put it, you know, make it challenging for them, so.
You know, my answer to that is they can tell us anytime, I don't have time right now, or, or I don't feel comfortable answering, answering that, you know, I mean, it's, it's.
Okay.
Anyway, we, we.
So, so we, the next item on the, on the agenda, we have two resolutions that Mr. Townsend brought forward, and I'd like for us to discuss those resolutions and, and get a sense of where we stand as a board. I think, is Wardington just resend them to us?
Okay. I'll do the first one, like, the, the easier one first, it's, it's the, the resolution idea was, was just for the board to express its preference for, um, raises over bonuses as compensation for, for our, our employees. I am happy to withdraw that as a, a resolution for this year, we're way down, down the road on that, and just ask that we add it to, or, I mean, if, if we can add it to our, our preferences, you know, our, our legislative agenda, legislative, that's, that's, that's fine for, for, for this year, if not, I just want that added moving ahead. That we, it is a much better funding mechanism, it's a much better, better way to staff our, our folks if we give them raises instead of, of bonuses. And, and does, does the board agree with that?
Yes, and do we agree with that as a board?
First of all, I don't even see the items, and as me, if we're going to discuss it, it should be in front of us, so I'm not in a position to answer it.
Okay, so, there, one was had to do with teacher pay.
Yeah, it's fine, I'll, I'll revisit it.
Okay, and, and so what I'm hearing you say is that you'll bring something back that we can include as part of our.
I will, I will agenda it for, for, for next time, I mean, I think I, I think I actually agenda it for, for this time, but, but, uh, you know, it was, or at least the, the, the con, the concept of it.
Okay, and, and was there a proposed resolution for the private schools and safety concerns or no?
Yeah, I've sent that multiple times, though, just like, and it.
You just sent that one?
That's our oversight.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, I.
That's the oversight, so that one I, yeah, so that one I see.
Yeah.
And, so does everyone have that? No?
Not yet, I'm trying.
Okay.
I think that the first thing that you mentioned is like a state, there is a state, um, push to, for that, to explain that it would be more beneficial to do salary over our bonus, I don't, you know.
I would, I would just like to add our voice to it, that's all.
Ms. Wardington?
Superintendent, didn't I hear that the, uh, superintendent's association had somehow made a resolution to that effect as well, or?
Uh-uh, no.
There were the, 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 the super, the, the superintendent of Leon Town, County Schools had a very specific.
Okay, maybe that's what I remember reading, all right.
Okay, so, um, so I guess we need, we don't, did you, would you like, did you want to get that one out before the end of session?
Yeah, 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 I mean, I mean, I think we should be on, I'm sorry.
So we need, we need a few minutes for folks to be able to bring it up. So we need, we need a few minutes for folks to be able to bring it up. In the meantime, we'll do this, we'll, we'll start the school board members' discussion if anybody has any, anything else they'd like to bring up at this time. Now, again, we are gonna have the roundtable, it's coming up soon, but if there are any comments, Ms. Fields?
I just wanted to make it known that I won't be staying for the roundtable today.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Miller?
Um, I just, we, Mr. Hill and I talked back in December, and I know we worked on, he's working on a group, we're talking about behavior. We have, we still get lots of calls on behavior crisis in the classroom. Can we agenda like a, or a work session item where that, like, we have a, a presentation on what the beha, I mean, across the board, we're not talking just, I know I usually talk just DSE, but I'm talking across the board what behavior supports are in place and how, you know, those are accessed, and some numbers on that. The largest percentage of my daily communication is on behavior. And we've got to address it, and I know we're working on it because we've got, I think he's formed a committee and there's things happening.
Teams.
Teams, but I think a presentation of the board so I can better understand, so I can tell people either this is what we have, or help is on the way, or, you know, I need more information on what we're doing to address the behavior crisis that we are in.
Madam Superintendent, she can, she can, Mr. Hill, could.
I'm taking that one, I can get a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we add it to an agenda? Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Right along with, with what Ms. Miller is talking about, a couple of things Mr. Hill and I have already spoken, but part of the PEA questions from October of last year dealt exactly with what Ms. Miller said. And I know Mr. Hill and I have tried to communicate as much as possible. But again, I, I asked and received, thank you very much, HR, how many teachers we have lost since day one, just teachers, almost three hundred? And the majority of them, I can tell you, when they call me, they're done. They put their keys on the desk and walk out. They don't even have another job, like, they don't care, they're done. But, you know, I know we lost some lives over spring break, and I, I just feel like, again, we need a team to work with our, our kids, and God, it's starting to be with our teachers. Of some mental health services, our school psychologists, and, and I've met with numerous guidance folks, numerous, in many different places across this county. And speaking to them, in just this last month, the trend is that they feel like we need an MTS facilitator full-time at every school, starting with our elementary. And, you know, one of them gave me this, I, I don't, I put five thousand notes on it, but there are direct and indirect services, and then all this other stuff that's laid upon them so that they can't counsel our kids, which I thought was why they went to school. But they need time to develop these peer relationships and coping strategies, especially in the elementary school. Social skills, conflict resolution, classroom counseling, individual counseling. Y'all, we have more kids saying they're gonna kill themselves sexually explicit language, you name it, it is going on. And, and I just feel like what we're doing so far is just like putting a Band-Aid on a gash. And, you know, and then I do want to thank everybody for sending us to Tallahassee, I thought it was very beneficial. And Wendy Dodge is invaluable, and as she walked the halls, let me tell you, folks listen to her, they know her, they respect her, and it was, she is a very good person to be up there for us, in my opinion.
I have a comment about the Tallahassee thing, oh, are you done, Ms. Fortney?
I don't know, depends on what you're saying.
Wait, wait, come back.
Do you want to come back?
No, go ahead.
Oh, the Florida School Board Association, they talked about their initiatives, and, you know, for some reason, term limits came up, and a lot of our delegation was like, what do you feel about that? Look, there is a list of things we need, term limits, great, I, I mean, we are, that is a mute subject with board member, you know, with the board, not all board members, but like, with the people that were there working for initiatives, with accountability for vouchers, our, our funding, you know, that is not, if they want to do eight years, that's great. You know, like, we've got to get stuff done, and that's not one of our priorities, that's not one of my priorities. So I just kept making it know that even though that might have been on the Florida School Board Association seemed to be a concern, maybe it was the smaller counties who would have a hard time filling seats, which I think that's very much an issue, that we needed to get to the real, which is money, and, and safety, and things that were, so that was my take. I was surprised that that seemed to be the first question from our delegation, and I, you know, so if you could help in, in the community, if that's something that's, you know, you agree or disagree with, they were interested in that, which wouldn't have been the first thing on my list.
And if I could add real quick on that, we went right to these pop-up private schools that are not held accountable. That was a more of a concern for us. Apples to apples is not being compared, they don't even have to hire, they, they have no oversight, et cetera. So when they ask about term limits, we immediately went to the accountability piece.
And I want to share one thing with that, I got a phone call from a grandmother on my way to Tallahassee. She was in a private school, a smaller school, grandchild was getting As and Bs on the report card. Two years in, almost three years in, they did some map testing, the child is significantly behind, a grade level behind. So she wanted to start shopping private schools. When you go to a legitimate private school that same standards we're doing, they won't accept them. And that delegation didn't realize that, like, your choice, when you have no accountability in private voucher systems, you're hurting the people who think they're doing due diligence or do not have that, that level of understanding, because once they make a choice, that might not be the best choice for their child, they are now limited. Her only option is to come back to public school when she wants to keep going, because she didn't realize she was in a school with people who were not qualified, who were not teaching the same curriculum. And so when she was unhappy with her choice, she had learned that now that she has no choice, now your only option. And I told her how great we could serve her in the public system, how we could do everything they were doing, but it was two and a half years later to learn that her child was that far behind because our, there is no accountability for what they're doing.
Mr. Townsend?
I wanted to dovetail, because I've been thinking about this, something that, that Ms. Fortney said. I, and, you know, our, want to be pointed about this, but our motto is, is students first. I don't see how it puts students first to not allow the counselors that are at every school, our guidance counselors who have training, to be the front line of child well-being. I mean, mental health is such kind of a vague phrase, and I, I just kind of clicked into place, I mean, I had a couple of conversations. We have today essentially a, a counselor more at every, every school, that's what they, they used to call them, guidance counselors. I think we may still call them, like, what they call themselves is, is kind of odd, I, I, I hear both things. But it's what you would think of as a guidance counselor. If I've read the, the personnel, right, we have about twenty to twenty-five social workers that are available for the district. We have about twenty to twenty-five of the mental health facilitators that we've hired as, as part of the MSD stuff. Correct me if I'm wrong about any of these numbers, okay? And we have about, what, forty school psychologists, forty to forty-five? So if you add, if you, if, if, if you add together the human beings who have background and mandate around student well-being, around child well, well, well-being, we, we have more than two hundred people right, right now, that if we could deploy them, like, to to a school, I mean, we couldn't quite do to to a school, and dedicate them to doing nothing but monitoring the well-being and health of kids who have regular check-ins with, with teachers about somebody who's struggling, struggling. I think it would be a much more efficient use of our resources, and would actually, it would also be much closer to where the need is, where, where, where the children are who are su, are suffering and, and, and struggling, because the early warnings that, that these schools are the, are the teachers and the friends. You know, we've got a certain amount of personnel, you know, Ms. Fortney says put, put a, a social worker at every, every school. And I'm like, we can't do that because we don't, we don't, we don't have twenty-five or so social workers. But we've got two hundred social work slash counseling slash psychology-related adjacent per, 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 personnel, including some, including at least one at every school already. If we could liberate our guidance counselors, our coun, coun, counselors from test prep, from, from being paid paperwork jobs, from being, you know, I understand, those duties will have to be absorbed by somebody. I, I get that, like, like, we have to figure out how that, how those get, get absorbed. But, but our, our motto is students first, and if we save one student by refocusing what our counselors do, and letting our counselors counsel and be aware of what's going on, then I think that's putting students, students first in a meaningful way. Secondarily to that, I want to, do we track suicides, do we, do we have an ongoing total, does someone know that, that number?
I don't know off the top of my head if we do track, the ones that we know about.
I want to know about every single one when it happens. I, I think the board, every single one, one of us should, should know. Don't, don't, don't have to identify the kid, don't have to identify, every single, every single one of, one of us should know. I personally want to know immediately. I know there have been others, then, there's, anyway. And to kind of bring this back to the, the voucher question a little bit, and to look at our own house as, 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 as pub, public school officials. There was a pretty famous case that made a lot, a lot, a lot of news in Dade County about a few weeks, weeks, weeks ago, in fact, I think I shared it with the, with the board. They had a teacher there who had been investigated six different times for sexual misbehavior with, with middle schoolers. Six different times by the district. And predictably and appropriately, the, 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 the people who want there to be no oversight of vouchers certainly hammered that case very fast, saying, see, oversight doesn't, doesn't work. You know, it doesn't, doesn't matter if you, you have oversight because you won't do the important thing, you, you can't police your own. That was, believe me, that was the argument being made. And, you know, there's, I have gotten myself in some difficult situations with this board in my insistence that we take things ser, er, er, seriously, and my public airing of them. That's why I did it. I don't want there to be, I don't ever want there to be repetitive allegation that I, that I sat by and let ha, happen. This, this guy wasn't arrested or stopped or confronted until the media started calling Carvajal. You know, you, I'm not sure how a superintendent doesn't know that a guy's been investigated by his investigator six times for actual abuse of children. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, under his authority, you know, I don't know the, the ins and outs of that case. What I would like it to mean here is that anytime there is a repeat allegation of, of something, and, and we can define what this is, certainly, any kind of sexual abuse, it could be a sexual harassment thing, it could, you know, we, we get, I, I identify areas. But I think it's important that the superintendent is informed immediately of any repetitive allegation, and maybe we do, we do, we do, we do that now, is that, is that a policy now? If, no, okay, I mean, that's a policy I will push for, that the, the superintendent is personally notified of any repetitive allegation. And, and, and of course, that means we have, we have, we have to track who's being investigated for things. Secondly, I would like the board to be notified of that as well, but I, but I, I realize there are some, some, some issues involved in that. But it should be a no-brainer that superintendent, we, that superintendent knows if we have repetitive allegations. And that way we can hold her accountable for how that's addressed. I think we as, as, as people who are fighting for the existence of public education, need, need, need to take things very ser, seriously when our oversight mechanisms fail, like, like they did in Dade, and like, I think at times they failed here. And that's so, so I will be agendaing that po, policy for our, for our, for our next meeting, and I think that dovetails into the, the, oh, 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 over the, the voucher oversight and safety resolution discussion.
Okay, any further comments? Yes, ma'am.
I, are we segueing into that conversation now?
If you'd like to.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't have.
My comment's segueing into that conversation, so if there's other comments.
No, that's fine.
My, I think if we're going to send a letter, it should be a letter in support of House Bill 1127 and Senate Bill 1444. They're both being heard today, the Senate bill's at 1:30, and 1412 not, anywhere you want to go. And the House bill is at 2:00 PM, and they're, they both passed their first and second committee of three committee stops, so, but they both basically do what you're talking about, where if there's any type of, or what you've discussed in the letter, where individuals that are found guilty of this cannot open another private school, cannot have contact with student, all of those types of things. So I think we, I mean, rather than saying this is something for the grand jury to expand their case to, I think we would be a lot more successful with just sending a letter of support and a resolution saying, we're fully behind these two bills, thank you for doing this, would be my.
No, I mean, I, I, they don't, there's no talk of creating any equivalent of, 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 of the Office of Early Learning, which is what the, what the equivalent would be, if, if they were serious, if, if, if they were serious about having a meaningful that. They, they would run it like they run EPK. They would, they would, they would have, they're, they're not creating any of, any of that, there's no identification of who, I'm, I'm talking about system oversight. And, and I think the MSD report, the, the, the grand, the grand, grand jury is looking into how systems have behaved and, and where there's been dis, 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 disconnects. I would like them or someone else to do the same thing. Do I think they're gonna do it? No. But, but it's, but it's, but it's, but I think it's important to go on, on, on record.
And to that point, I think, I mean, this letter can be, you know, thank you so much for, these two bills we're in full support of, we would love you to expand them to include an Office of Oversight for these voucher programs or something like that. I will not be in support of sending a resolution to expand the grand jury. I think that will go a lot, I think we'll go a lot further trying to work it through the legislative process, saying this is something that we need help with. After talking to representatives and senators, and I, Ms. Fortney was in, I think, all of the meetings with me, they are very concerned of particularly the pop-up private schools, not necessarily as much the Lincoln Christians or the All Saints, the ones that have been around and are there, it's the ones that are popping up in shopping centers and have six kids that are consistently, all of a sudden, popping up from the voucher program.
They're so concerned about them that they're gonna feed them tax money with no oversight at all.
I'm telling you, that is, those are the concern, I mean, when we bring them, they just don't realize that they're there. There were, every representative and senator we talked to, other than, I will say.
In AIDS.
In AIDS, Senator Stargel's office is a little bit more aware, they've been pushing this bill, it's actually in Senator Stargel's committee today. But I think that that's something that they have on their radar and are.
Well, here, here. Ms. Fields, Ms. Fields had some comments you'd like to make.
Well, I'm reading the proposal resolution, and I guess my question is, why are we having to single out Senator Stargel? And the governor, at a time when we are trying to get the support that we need, it just seems to me like if we're gonna do something similar to this, we don't need to be singling out people's names, that's my first concern. And then the other item would be similar to what Sarah Beth is saying, if there's something already that's being proposed, why can't we just add to that, in support of that?
I would just offer very quickly that your resolution is. I would just offer very quickly that your resolution has made its presence known in Tallahassee. So whatever you hope to accomplish, you've already accomplished. For what that's worth, Madam Superintendent, did you have something you would like to offer?
Not that, Ms. Fortney has wanted to make a comment.
Correct, I just wanted to address Mr. Townsend. You asked earlier whether or not we, I guess, track employee discipline. We do, we use a new program, it's called Labor Soft. I implemented that program just to track employee discipline. It allows us to see those repeat offenders and the causes for which we are now investigating them. Mrs. Byrd is, I don't strategically inform Mrs. Byrd of that. However, Mr. Kirk and I talk on a daily basis about employees that have a previous discipline history and if they are now being investigated for something. In addition, we also work with our counterparts in CCA and local law enforcement agencies, especially if it's a criminal offense or if it's a criminal allegation. So generally, we work with them to determine if the allegation is substantiated and if not, or if it is, then we go from there in terms of disciplining them. A lot of times, though, we take, I think, stricter action or swift action with some teachers and/or staff when any abuse allegation is made. Think about the toothbrush issue. We recently lost that case because a DOA judge overturned us. A DOA judge said that it is not enough for a teacher to tell a student to, to clean the floor with a toothbrush, that that was not abuse. So I would say that the Miami-Dade cases, or that case, stands alone. I would not want to use that to compare it to our investigators and our investigative process. That's it.
Could I have one thing to add? I mean, I, I, I have, you know, I, I think you mentioned creating the track, tracking system some time ago. I would have loved to have had that conversation months, months ago. I'm very, very happy to hear you're doing that. This is exactly the kind of thing I would like to talk about with staff, to know that this is going on, because then I can make the case for you, you know, and, and rather than having to do it this way. And, you know, I think the, that's a very positive development.
We've had that tracking system for about a year now, if I'm not mistaken. It was, I've been here since October twenty sixteen. So when I came in, we were tracking it on an Excel spreadsheet. That's unacceptable for me as just a legal practitioner. So we started the Labor Soft program, I want to say in January, or maybe in January, following year, if I'm not mistaken, just to track the disciplines that are going on in the district. So it's been in existence for a while.
No, I remember there, there was, there was a general reference to developing the capability. The board was never followed up that it had, had been done. And that's, that's the kind of thing I would like to hear about. I, I listen to what you guys say. I take it seri- seriously. I like to give you credit when you do something that I, that I really want to see done. And, you know, that's, that's why I keep saying, for God's sake, let, let me talk to staff about, about these things. I, I can be helpful to you. Concerning the, this is the, I'm, I'm happy to take any names, names out, that's, that's fine. You know, here, here is, here is the, the crux of what I think this board should go on, on record saying. That a voucher school oversight organization, similar to the Office of Early Learning, be created, fully funded, and fully staffed prior to any expansion of either private or publicly funded. Get the, get the oversight mechanism in place first. Then you can talk about it, expand, expanding. Second, request that any school receiving scholarship or taxpayer funding comply with the same safety and accountability me- measures that state government imposes on public schools. I think the board should be on record saying, private, private schools who are going to get public money, do both of those things, or, you know, are, 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 are subject to both of those things. Happy, happy to take the names, the names, the names, the names out. That is, if there are four people, four folks who want to join, join me in that, let's, 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 let's do it. If not, we can move, 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 move on, but I, I just wanted to put that on the, sorry.
Well, here's where I stand on it. I concur with Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Fields. I think we ought to support existing legislation, but I also think, I like your idea. I think we can add your suggestions to that, they're very valid suggestions.
But I don't support that legislation without, I mean, because I'm assuming that's not standalone legislation. It's, it's part of the, the overall voucher expansion, right?
I, let me, I think, yeah.
It's not attached to that, but it was part of.
Yeah, it's not a taut, the subject is actually educational employees.
And you, I, I mean, I know you know the legislative process. You just want to make this known because this is, this is, this legislative session is over.
Right, I know.
Okay, and I agree that we should, I agree with Ms. Fields and that about not naming people. And if we want to stand as a district and say, look, you've got to have these people, you've got to hold these people accountable. I think we all agree to that, how to do it, and to make that, make that office in Tallahassee would be, you know you're asking for something that's not happening. But I, but to say that that's what should happen, that what we are, we are judged on a whole different playing field. And even when it comes to safety, does the public know, does the public understand? Even the stuff we have in place is not going to help you in a private school. They do not have the same safety regulations. I could say yes, as a board member of Polk County, I would like to see that done to make sure those children are safe, because they're all children of Polk County, they're all our students. But to tell them they're going to do it before they expand the voucher, I mean, they're not, that's not going to happen.
So here's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that we're all in agreement with, in principle with Mr. Townsend's suggestions. The question is, do we also want to support the existing legislation? So where do we stay on that? Yes, ma'am.
Michael, I personally like to start out by saying thank you, because typically you catch a lot more flies with honey. So I think by starting out and saying, hey, this is a great start, we appreciate that you've recognized that this is an issue. Thank you for this great start. We, you know, as practitioners, these are the issues that we're still seeing. It'd be great if we could get an amendment in this, or if there's anything that you can do to address this as well. Does that make sense?
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, and then I, I agree, okay, with everybody. I, I think we need to support, as she has indicated. And my thought would be, and somebody said it, so I don't remember who, to maybe put the few points in there that you just reiterated at the end and add that in there to say, not only is what you're doing great, and I agree with you, we start with the thank you, we'd be kind, we'd be gracious, and then say, in addition to that, well, it's just how I live, my world here. And then in addition to that, this is very important to us, to have the oversight as you have outlined in your bullets, wherever the, you know, the few, the oversight organization, similar to the Office of, be created, fully funded, fully staffed. We understand that, and we know it may not happen this year, but at least that seed has already been planted for next year, and maybe they would do that. That's kind of where I would like to see us go, because I'm with you. I, I try to do it in a kind and gracious manner. I know that's not always the way.
I'm, I'm not going to support thanking the legislature for expanding a voucher program headlong without slowing, slowing down. That's going to pump money into schools like, like King of Prop. I mean, if, if you guys want to thank them for that, go, go, go ahead, it's fine. I'm going to be on record as saying, no. There's nothing to thank. I mean, the only reason they, they even put this in is because, frankly, I think I started yelling about it. You know, as, you know, I think public pressure works. And making things, making people understand that this is where their taxpayer money is going to go. It's going to go to schools like, like King of Prop. It's going to go to, to the pastor type Igers of the world is, is important. If we don't want to sign, sign, sign on to the resolution, that's fine. One, 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 one thing I might suggest for the future, then, you know, maybe take it out of the realm of, of the, the legisla- of the legislative set, I said it all, and come across some principles that we agree on, on what oversight should look like if, 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 if they're going to do it. So, so we take it away from the legislators and we just say, here's, 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 here's what some, so I'm not in, in a position of thanking them for a wildly, wildly irresponsible expansion and heist of, of public money, and you guys aren't in, in the position of like signing on to me and make yourselves die.
Here's a thought, what if we said, we appreciate, I'm in agreement with you, I don't, I'm not crazy about thanking them either. But what if we start with this, we appreciate your efforts to address these very important issues. However, we also believe that it should go further, and how do we feel about doing something like that?
I, my comment was going to be looking at both of these bills, reading the summary and skimming through, I mean, they're nineteen pages, but skimming through the underlying what's been updated. These are standalone bills that only address the fact that if they've been disqualified from working in, if they're on the DOE disqualification list for working in a public school, that means charter school, and that also means a private school. It specifically says in here that, I scrolled. Basically, it specifically says in here that if you're receiving voucher money and we find that you have employed one of these people, you will immediately lose your voucher funding. So I think that that is something that's, I mean, it's standalone, it doesn't include any of the other expansion of vouchers. I don't see what's wrong with supporting something that's trying to to tighten up the, where the money goes.
Is that retroactive? Because I know schools that are employing people that we will not employ.
Oh, that's a great question.
I do not know, but I can certainly spend more than twenty minutes convicted felonies.
So who, so it sounds like, here's what I'm hearing. We're, we're, we're moving forward with something saying, we appreciate your efforts on these two bills. Thank you for your.
However.
However, we want to say it. And however, we feel like it needs to go a step further.
Yes.
Are we, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I would have to see a lot.
And then the next issue is somebody has to write.
Right, right.
That's why we have a creative, creative turning.
Mr. Bridges, we're sure you, you are busy.
Mr. Bridges is not even writing, he is on his email.
How about the present legislation being presented is a step towards.
There we go.
Yeah, something along those lines. Have, have, are you, have you been kind of? So could you help us draft something, please?
Absolutely. Fortney seems to have a few key words there that I thought.
Can I, can I, I mean, do we, do we as a board oppose the voucher expansion? Like, 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 if, if, if we, if we were up there and we're, we're voting, do we, do we as a board oppose the voucher expansion?
I oppose.
Does, does, does anybody support it?
No, I don't support it.
I think we all oppose it, but it's going to happen.
But see, there's much too much of that. What if we said, while we oppose the voucher expansion, we appreciate the efforts to, to create the beginnings of oversight. However, here are but we don't, I mean, I mean, do you guys, do you guys agree on the Office of Early Learning concept?
That's great.
Yeah.
For oversight?
Yeah, of course.
And the Office of School, the Office of Choice under the DOE are taking some steps for oversight, but nothing nearly as drastic.
And can, can I actually add the identification of an individual who has responsibility for quality of vouchers? Of, of, like, like, is Adam Miller the superintendent of voucher schools in Florida? I want, I want, I want to know who that person is. So so I mean, is, is that language accept, accept, acceptable? The why, the why, the why we oppose the expansion?
Yeah, let's see what it looks like. Mr. Bridges, I, since Ms. Reynolds has gone to the trouble today to determine that in fact these are standalone bills and they have nothing to do with the original legislation related to vouchers. I, I, in agreement, we should demonstrate some sort of language indicating we appreciate that, at least those, those measures.
We'll get to work.
Thank you.
I think we also need to make sure that we include Wendy Dodge. She's up there, she votes. We're reading from something that's on the computer. She's right there in the midst of it.
To be fair, we were up there with her last week, and this was discussed quite a bit, so I didn't just
I understand.
get all that information.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
And I should give her credit.
And I appreciate that, but I'm just saying, we, we need to make sure that we include her as well and get her. I mean, Ms. Fortney is talking about how great she is.
Yeah.
If she's great, then we need to include her in the greatness.
And respect it. I think that's the key word.
It is, I will too.
What are, what are we including here?
This discussion.
We're going to have her review.
She's done this for nineteen years for this district.
So they take a look at the resolution before we move on? And, and offer her thoughts and suggestions? Okay, so.
Then we're sure you want this in the form of a resolution, not in the form of a letter?
I think so.
Can you, can you, can you go for like?
What, resolution?
Frankly, I think, yeah, resolution will be presented to the school board for approval.
Can, I think probably it would need to be a letter then, because session ends May third.
If it's, if it is a letter, then it, if it is going out from the board, it's going to require the board's action to, to approve it. It can be a letter that goes, that is sent out from the board chair or, or that can be sent out from each board member individually, similar, similar letter, however you'd like.
Well, what I would propose is a letter, and we can circulate it and make sure everybody has input back to you.
Yeah, I want to be very, very careful to make sure that we don't run into a sunshine problem.
Any communication is going to go back to Mr. Bridges.
Yes, I'll, I'll be happy to do that.
And then after Mr. Bridges, are we okay with Mr. Bridges saying, hey, we've got something good to go, then having me sign it?
I think it should be the board chair, absolutely, representing all of us, if that's, if everybody's in.
I thought I heard agreement, that we make clear as a board, we're opposing the voucher expansion.
Yes, in there, yes.
But we appreciate the preliminary steps to provide oversight. Like, we, we, we want identification of a specific person, who, who's, who's the
Who's the belly button.
Who's the superintendent of vouchers? We, we want an early learning style oversight mechanism, and we want them subject to the same rules that we're subject to if, if they're getting public money. Is that, is that right?
Which is two paragraphs.
And, and I indicated I'd like for us to specifically identify the, those pieces of legislation that.
Okay, sure, yeah, 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 I'd identify it, yes.
Yes, you have this, Wes, or do you have any of the numbers? It's S B.
We're going to see this before it, it pops anywhere.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Bridges will make it available to you.
I'll draft it and, and send, send the draft to everyone so you can see.
And we'll have to vote on it anyway, right?
No.
Yeah, no.
We're just going to respond to this.
Vote on, we'd have to go to the next board meeting or call a board meeting for that purpose.
Okay.
So I'm saying, I'll, I'll draft something, try to, try to touch all those points and circulate it to you before it goes out.
Okay.
Just because Lori asked, the Senate bill is S B fourteen forty-four.
Right.
And the House bill is H B eleven twenty-seven.
So any other comments? I'd like for us to have a few minutes to maybe grab a sandwich before we start the roundtable. So are there any other comments related to the work session? Okay, so let's, are, are we good with half an hour? Is everybody okay with that? So we'll be back here at one o'clock then for our roundtable?